Good evening. I'd like to call the Thursday, September 19th, 2019 Township of Howell Planning Board, our regular meeting to order. Eileen, please read the opening statement.
I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open. Adequate notice haven't been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 4th, 2019, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Trittown News. Second, on January 4th, 2019, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 4th, 2019, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits, which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Boyle?
Present.
Mr. Durado?
Here.
Mr. Husser?
Here.
Chief Kudrick has been excused. Mr. Nacastro?
Here.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Seaman? I have not heard from Mr. Seaman. Mr. Everett has been excused. Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Here.
And Chairman Nash?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you.
At this time, I will ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for a moment of silence for our troops and our first responders, both here and abroad. Paul?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Eileen, do we have any correspondence?
One second. Yes, I have one letter.
Have the record reflect, Mr. Seaman? Show it up.
Thank you. I have one letter which I left for everybody. It was from the State of New Jersey, DEP. It's in regards to the Monmouth County Reclamation Center in Titten Falls, in regards to their application for renewal, and that if anybody wishes to go on their site and review that and make comments, you have 30 days from September 11th to do so. And I left everybody a copy of that letter. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll get right into the applications in front of the board. The first one is case number SP 904A-2, 3G Corporation. It's a design waiver for identification signs. It's an application of 3G Corporation as applicant and owner seeking approval to erect three directional signs to provide directional information to the two commercial buildings which are under construction within the western portion of the site, which received approval from the Planning Board in 2009 and again in 2016. On premises known as Block 71, lots 189, 51, and 51.01, which is consolidated lot 1.01, U.S. Highway 9 South and Ford Road. Mr. Pape?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, board's professionals and public. My name is Kenneth Pape. I am an attorney with Heilbronn Pape. This evening, I have the opportunity to represent 3G, the owners of the shopping center that was previously referred to as the Grebo Center and now as the Goldman Center. And before I begin our substantive presentation, I'd just ask if the board could confirm receipt of our notices and that jurisdiction has been established.
The board secretary has reviewed the notice and found everything to be in order.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Pape, you know, our procedure here with design waivers is we ask our engineer to comment on them, and based upon what...
Mr. Chair, these actually, these are design waivers, not submission waivers.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, we've already granted the submission waivers. They're just asking for relief tonight.
Okay. All right, so go ahead with your presentation.
Surely. I'll be brief and succinct. This is, the shopping center has the large main building, and I think everyone's familiar with the large main building, Amazing Savings is the anchor. And there are two buildings that are built to the west, and they're in the back. They're called the North and South Buildings. And they're not immediately visible from the highway. They are set quite deep from the highway. And the concern that our clients had, and the one that we bring to your attention, is that as people enter the shopping center off of Route 9, that it was important to provide direction to the traveling public quickly to get them away from the Route 9 intersection where decisions have to be made as to whether to make a right turn or travel to the rear. So, working with John Ray, a traffic engineer, and Steve Redasty, who designed the buildings and now the signs, we came up with a scheme of three signs placed in the critical locations for the purpose of orienting traffic and moving them through the site without creating any safety issues. That is the outline, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I can present it to you succinctly. Introducing first to you Peter Strong, who is the site engineer. His testimony is just for the sole purpose of identifying the locations of the signs, and then John Ray will describe their purpose and why their size and their purpose. Acceptable?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Strong.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Peter W. Strong, S.T.R.O.N.G.
Oh, good. Mr. Strong has testified before this board. Yes, we'll... Except?
Thank you.
Just one second, Mr. Pape. Mr. Strong, my usual questions. Your license is current with the State Board?
It is.
And there are no pending actions or prior actions against you?
No.
Okay, we'll accept Mr. Strong as an expert in civil engineering.
Thank you very much. Mr. Strong, if you could just introduce the exhibit that you prepared and identify to the board the location of the main building, the location of the new buildings under construction, and then the location of the proposed signs.
So, we've premarked some exhibits, so it'll be up to A5?
And A5 is a sheet from your packet enhanced with three yellow highlight markers showing where the signs are located.
Color rendering? That is correct. This is, this is the variant sketch that was submitted to, to the board for consideration. And the three signs that are located on the site that we're asking to have approved are, one in the front, just after you get into the, into the site, as to whether...
You need to speak, you need to speak right into that mic or we're not going to pick you up.
Okay.
Thank you.
One right in the front, where you come in from the highway, so where a decision has to be made as to which way to go. A second sign towards the back end of the existing shopping center building, again, directing people as to where the buildings are in the back. And a third sign that would service the Ford Road traffic that comes in from the south and would be faced in that direction to orient people to which way to go once they get to that intersection.
That's all? I'm sorry, could you just, the third sign, where, could you point to that?
The third sign is, is here at the intersection of the driveway from Ford Road with the driveway from Route 9.
Okay.
People can decide which way to go once they get to that stop sign.
Mr. Chairman, I think what's important, important to call out is the directional signage itself is permitted. What they're here to seek the relief for is actually on the size of that sign. Our ordinance has a limitation of 25 square feet, and their proposed sign is 48 square feet. So, I think what's probably more important, I mean, understanding the shopping center and understanding the number of pads and the access as was indicated, is this signage is actually permitted under our code? It's really just the size of this sign that we should be focused on.
And you're basically, you're saying the sign is basically, the signs are twice the square footage permitted by ordinance?
Essentially.
Mr. Strong's testimony has concluded. I wanted him to make the board aware of the locations, the, the need for the signs and the font size that's incorporated into the size, signs, and the ultimate size, it will be the testimony of John Ray. So, with your permission, we can go to Mr. Ray.
So, board, have any questions of Mr. Strong? I just have to open it up to the question, the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to ask questions of the civil engineer? If so, please step forward to the podium. Seeing none, I'll close that portion. Please go to Mr. Ray now.
Ray, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
John Ray, R.E.A.
And Mr. Ray has testified in front of this board numerous times. We've accepted him as a expert witness in traffic engineering. John?
Thank you, Mr. Nash.
The usual two questions. You're current with the board, and you have no pending actions or prior actions against you?
That is correct.
Okay, we'll accept Mr. Ray tonight as an expert in traffic engineering.
So, Mr. Ray's credentials are part of the record as an expert in traffic engineering. Mr. Ray and his firm participated in assisting us in locating the signs and also identifying the font size that was the correct font size for the sign to carry out its purpose. I'm going to ask if you could introduce the actual signs to the board, describe this, why the sign, sign sizes are as they are shown, and why the font that was chosen is the appropriate font size.
Well, everything was chosen for visibility for the motorists, particularly the motorist entering from the driveway on Route 9. As they come in from Route 9, there is an internal intersection where you have to make a decision whether to turn right into the first row of parking stalls that are along the Route 9 frontage, or head to the north side of the building, or continue straight to the two new buildings that are under construction. So, we wanted to make sure there was no confusion when people entered from Route 9. They were readily able to observe the sign, observe the letters, the messages that were intended to be imparted to them, and so that's, that's essentially the reason and the need for the signs.
You could, the architectural plan prepared by Mr. Redasty shows the actual signage. If we're up to A6, Counselor?
Yes.
We are, yes. A6, so if you would be so kind as to put an A6 and a 91919 on there?
So, this is a color rendering of the architectural?
Yes. I'm going to ask if you would describe the message of the first sign. If you could show the board on the plan, which is the sign that you would first see as you come off of the highway?
The, the first sign is indicated on the right side of A6, and it basically just indicates with an arrow straight ahead, North and South Buildings are straight ahead, so that that person that comes in from Route 9 gets to that decision point where the intersection is and knows if they're going to one of the new buildings, they have to proceed straight.
And the font size that was chosen?
Well, that was basically, it's, it's large enough for people to see it right away, make sure that they understand the message, and there's no confusion, and they don't sit at that intersection confused as to which way to go.
If you could take us to the second sign, this, actually, the second and the third sign are identical signs, one oriented towards traffic coming from Ford Road and one oriented towards the traffic coming from Route 9?
That is correct.
Okay, and if you could describe that sign and its purpose?
Again, the, for the traffic coming in from Route 9 that heads straight toward the two rear buildings, that sign, the purpose of that sign is confirmation that you've made the right decision, you're heading to the right area of the shopping center. As you can see, the font size of the letters on that sign are a little bit smaller because you've already made that decision to head toward the two back buildings, and now it's just confirmation that you've arrived at the right location. The same thing with traffic coming in from Ford Road. It's just confirmation that you're at the right location.
All three of those signs are currently shown as 48 square feet, and we've had the opportunity to confer. The front, it's my understanding that the front signs, 48 square feet, is critical to have the full-size font, but that the two signs to the rear, they could be reduced to 25 square feet and still have the effect that we're looking for.
I believe that is the case. That's correct.
That, Mr. Chairman, is your applicant's presentation on the signs. We're respectfully asking to have the first sign, which we think is important to move traffic away from Route 9 and to the rear of the site at the size that is shown, and the rear signs, we have no problem reducing to the actual limits of the ordinance.
Okay, so we're going to represent, then, that you will comply with the ordinance for the two rear signs?
We agreed to do so, yes, Mr. Chairman.
So, now we're just talking about a waiver for one sign?
That's correct.
If I could just ask my engineer, the, the incoming sign, sign number one, it's eight and a half feet from the ground to the top of the sign, is, our ordinance permit that?
It's, I think seven foot is our ground clearance, and it does comply with that. That's our required ground clearance.
Okay, well, it's showing me eight foot, six inches from ground to the top of the sign above the address.
I'm not, maybe you could show me where you mean on there. I'm looking at, here's our seven-foot ground clearance. The total height of the sign is 15 feet 10.
Oh, 15, I'm sorry.
Yeah. It's the ground clearance that your ordinance dictates and then the maximum height. I don't believe we're in violation of either of those, Mr. Chair.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, the only questions I would have of the applicant is typically, we get some landscaping around the base of these signs. Would you be able to provide that?
Surely, surely.
And are these signs double-faced?
The front sign, no, they're not, no, they're single-faced. Yes, they're single-faced. They're oriented towards a specific traffic.
Okay. I, beyond that, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything additional.
And the Ford Road sign, wouldn't you want to have that double-faced? You've got traffic coming from both directions.
No, it's, it's, it's the traffic coming off of the highway that we want to move out of that intersection quickly.
And if I could...
But you're asking for a sign on Ford Road, too.
No, Mr. Boyle, if I can, it's an internal sign, so if you, I don't know if you can turn. So, this is the one sign, and that's why it'd be one-sided. It's for the vehicle that's approaching from Ford Road. And then the other sign is as you're coming down from Route 9, you'd be able to see this sign.
And sign number three isn't within the site triangle for that internal intersection?
It is not. In addition, it also has the ground clearance that would be required.
That's right. Board, have any other questions?
So, if that's the case, then any vegetation that they add, I guess would have to be a low type so that it doesn't impact the site triangles?
We typically only ever do low line around the base of a sign.
I just didn't know if that would be something that needed to be put on the record, that's all.
Sure. So, any landscaping will be designed to and kept at 30 inches or less?
So, just add that to the record.
Surely.
Any other questions?
Public?
Yep. At this time, I'll open up to the public. If the public has any questions of the traffic engineer and his testimony, please step forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. Mr. Pape, you want to say any closing?
Mr. Chair, that is the request of your applicant. Your applicant is being careful in coming before you with what they anticipate could be traffic concerns before they open the buildings to the rear. I believe that the purposes are strictly for safety, and when it was brought to our attention that we had increased the size of the signs to 48 square feet, which was twice what was permitted, we revisited what was required at the rear. That's the relief request of the applicant.
All right, let me just open it to the public for testimony. And anyone in the public, if you might come up and make any comments against, for, or whatever on this application, please feel free to step forward, or please step forward. All right, seeing none, I will close the public portion of this application. Do I have a motion here on the board? Mr. Chairman? The, the motion will be to grant the relief for the one sign, sign number one, being 48 square feet. The applicant has indicated he will comply with the ordinance for the other two signs. Make a motion to approve case number SP 904A-2.
And the other condition about...
Additional vegetation and maintenance of that?
Right.
Or landscaping, sorry.
Paul, you've got to really, you're not, she's not picking you up on the mic. If you could just re-motion. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve case number SP 904A-2, 3G Corporation.
A second.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Durado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Good night.
Have a good night.
Good night.
The next application is case number SP 1065, Tesla Inc. It's a minor site plan application. It's an application of Tesla, Inc., as applicant, and Wawa, Inc., as owner, seeking minor site plan approval for the installation of eight Tesla electric vehicle charging stations within a proposed curb island within the existing parking area, along with associated equipment and conduit connecting within the existing utility easement on premises known as Block 175, lots 40.02, and the address is 909 State Route 33, which is in Freehold, but the address is in Freehold, but it's Howell Township. Counselor?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Duncan Prime from the firm of Prime &amp; Tuvel. I represent Tesla, Inc., with reference to our application here this evening. As the chair stated, this property is the site of the existing Wawa convenience store with the sale of fuel located at 909 Route 33. That is the location on Route 33 that intersects Five Points Road and Howell Road as well. As the chair also indicated, the site is owned by Wawa. My client, Tesla, has a lease agreement with Wawa to install eight electric vehicle charging posts for use by Tesla vehicles to charge at this location. It's a very simple and straightforward application. It's a minor site plan. The only thing we're proposing, as you'll hear from our engineer, is the installation of these charging posts and the related apparatus that goes with those charging posts. The only change to the plan that you approved for Wawa is that we're relocating an air pump. There's nothing else about the Wawa operation that will change. The convenience store will stay the same size. The fuel pumps will stay as is. There are plenty of parking spaces here, 90, I believe, whereas 29 are required by code. We are taking up eight spaces. Two of those will be dedicated to, to charging Tesla vehicle, Tesla vehicles only, and the other six are what we call enabled. They're shared with Wawa for use by a Tesla vehicle or by a Wawa customer. With that, I'd like to introduce, I have two witnesses. I have a representative from Tesla itself and also our civil engineer from Dewberry Engineering, but that, in a nutshell, is the application is very, very minor. Thank you.
Let's proceed with your first witness.
Sure. Henry?
What do you want to say?
Okay, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please get close to the mic and state and spell your name.
Hello, everybody. My name is Henry Misas, and I'm an installation manager with Tesla.
Can you spell your last name for us?
M.I.S.A.S. Henry, I indicated to the board that Tesla has an agreement with Wawa to install these charging posts, charging station at this location for benefit of the board. Can you explain to the board what exactly Tesla's doing here? And more specifically, if someone wants to charge once this operation's underway, how would they go about doing it? Sure. So, let me start by saying that this is one of, you know, about a thousand charging stations that we've done across the country and across the world. In New Jersey, we have something like 20 to 30 stations. This particular area is not as well-served by our charging network, so we want to expand and add charging locations for our customers. The charging stations basically are DC fast chargers. They will take something in between five to 30 minutes for a vehicle to come in and charge. Really depends on how big the battery in the vehicle is, what state of charge it comes in, and other factors, but five to 30 minutes is more or less what it takes. Our agreement with Wawa is pretty simple. It's just a lease agreement, and we are here for upwards of five years, five to 10 years, more or less, is our, the terms that we negotiate. Wawa is happy to have us. We've done many stations with Wawa. We don't impact their operations at all. In fact, we come in, we do the installation, we upkeep the equipment, and the customers deal with us. They don't deal with Wawa at all. And to give you a sense of how these work, if you haven't been in a Tesla or a supercharger, you can find these in the car. The car will tell you where they are with a big iPad screen that shows all the charging locations. There's no kiosk, there's no credit card swiper. You just come in, you plug in your car, and it starts charging. And the billing happens all in the cloud. It's kind of like, I don't know, having a Spotify subscription, buying some music or something. So, everything's very seamless. Once you're done charging, say five to 30 minutes, again, just unplug, put the plug back in the post, and start driving away. And people will either watch movies in the car. We just came out with Netflix, so you can do that. You could go and buy, you know, a soda or use the restroom or something. So, we like locations like this because they're 24/7 and they have facilities for our customers to use. It's very seldom that we would just put a charging station somewhere that doesn't have facilities. So, Wawa is a great example of, you know, a nice amenity. So, yeah, it's more or less, you know, the nuts and bolts of it, so open to some questions.
Is that his testimony?
That is the conclusion of our representative's testimony. Captain, answer questions, I'm sure the board has some.
Any board have any questions? No, no.
I do.
Deputy Mayor?
I do have one question. Obviously, you're here with Tesla in mind. Is this station going to be able to be utilized by other vehicles, other than a Tesla vehicle?
Sure. Great question. The quick answer is no. Our charging stations are just designed for Tesla vehicles. The plug only works with Teslas, so it, yeah. For the foreseeable future, Tesla stations only work with Teslas.
And no plans to change that, correct?
No.
Okay.
So, how is it identified so someone who comes in with another type of electric vehicle knows that it won't work?
Sure. Well, the person will probably not be routed to this station because the cars, let's say a Chevy Volt or a Porsche or something, will not have these superchargers in the navigation. They will have other universal charging solutions. So, chances are, they won't come to this, but if they do stumble into it and they try to use it, they can always unplug the cable from the charging station, but they cannot put it into the car because the plug won't fit, so there's just no way for them to use it.
Is there any...
But as I understood, I thought the initial testimony was two Tesla only and six shared chargers, so is...
Shared meaning, shared with Wawa customers. So, if Wawa...
Yeah, speaking to the mic, we won't get, I'm sorry.
So, if Wawa is super busy for some reason, which this location, I can't imagine, with 90 spaces, but if it was and there were not Tesla customers charging their vehicles, a Wawa customer could park in those six. Two dedicated meaning, just Tesla charging only.
Is there going to be any signage that says this is for Tesla only?
Yes, there are, there are signs at each post, and...
Yes, there are signs at each post, and we'll have our engineer walk through that when we pass mine.
Okay, fine. Board have any other questions?
The safety feature, Mrs. Brown comes in, plugs in, and forgets and starts driving away, would that still plug? What happens?
Well, the car will not drive if it's plugged. The car will show you, first of all, that it's plugged in this big screen, and then the car itself will not enable driving. So that, that particular safety issue wouldn't happen. Other safety, you know, say there's a short or something in the cable, the system will not charge, it wouldn't even energize the charging post. The system will automatically recognize that fault and shut it off. So there's, there's really no electricity, high voltage electricity into the post until the car is plugged in. It recognizes the car, it does a, you know, a quick sort of handshake, software, make sure the hardware works, and then only then starts charging. And then when you unplug it, you know, back to no charge, no energy.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I don't know if this one's going to be for this witness or the engineer, but I don't, I don't see any bollard protection actually in front of the machine, so is the machine designed to handle a car impact?
Yes, I can address that. There are bollards in front of each stall, so we are deciding for protecting the posts, the charging posts, but the bollard is not directly in front of the charging post. It's in front of the stall, so we're assuming people are driving into the stall between the lines.
Yeah, just, then I'll wait for the engineer's testimony to show me where they are. I just don't see them on the plans clear enough.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, just want to open it to the public. Anyone in the public who would like to ask questions of this witness, please step forward. Seeing none, I'll close that portion, and let's move on to your engineer.
Sure, my second. Excuse me, my second and final witness is from Dewberry Engineering, David Revette. Dave, you want to get sworn in?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
David Revette, R.E.V.E.T.T.E., with Dewberry Engineers.
Mr. Revette, have you testified here before this board before?
Not before this board, but I have testified in front of many boards in the state of New Jersey before.
Would you mind providing just a very brief description of your qualifications, including any professional licenses that you may hold?
Absolutely. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, civil engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is current. I graduated from Clarkson University with a civil engineering degree, and I have been designing sites in New Jersey for the past seven, seven and a half years.
All right, we'll accept his credentials as an expert in civil engineering.
Thank you.
Hey, Dave, would you mind walking through the plan and also explain to the board what I'm about to pass out to them?
Absolutely. I'll guess we'll start with the handout. This is...
No, give it to the secretary, please.
This is a photo simulation. Each sheet will show you, it's a photo simulation, so it's not obviously there yet, but it's what it's proposed to look like. This is color renderings, the existing site, what it looks like, and the proposed...
Just before you move on, let's just mark this.
Yep, let's mark it. We're up to, I believe, A5. Yep, this is A6.
So this is, excuse me, one, two, three.
So we're marking the whole packet as A6?
We'll call it a six-page photo simulation packet. And label it A6.
Mr. Cicerio?
That's fine.
Okay. Okay, Dave, go ahead.
Okay. As described, the site, it's on the northern side of Route 33 on the corner of Park Ave or Route 33 and Five Points Road. The property itself is 7.1 acres. It's a Wawa food store with gas pumps, and there are ninety existing off-street parking spaces. On Z1 of the proposed here, I've got an aerial and the tax map here.
And Dave, was this submitted as part of our plan set, or is this an exhibit made for tonight's hearing?
This was submitted.
It was submitted as shown in color?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The site, the Tesla site itself, as described, eight charging posts on a concrete curb. The concrete curb is three feet wide by forty-six inches in length. The equipment, the electrical equipment that will feed this, these eight charging posts, consist of two Tesla supercharger cabinets, a utility transformer, and a electrical H-frame which holds service disconnects and other electrical equipment. On the site itself, it's located, if you are familiar, on the west side of the property, behind, behind the gas pumps and away from Route 33, in the rear back corner of the lot, the furthest, basically the furthest stalls from the, from the street and the store itself. As stated, the utility conduits, electrical conduits will come in underground from Route 33. They'll go to the utility transformer, to the electrical equipment, and then to the charging, the supercharger cabinets, and then from there, they will go underground to the charge stalls at the concrete island.
Could you explain, could you explain the supercharger cabinet? Is the supercharger cabinet where the Tesla charging station is actually getting its power from? So that the actual...
Yes, so these cars, they're DC power.
So that's where the DC power is being generated, is in that cabinet?
This is a converter from the AC power to the DC power.
Got it.
The utility power, AC power is coming from the transformer into the superchargers where it's switched to DC.
So is it fair to say that until someone actually plugs the mach, the plug into the car, from the cabinet to the actual pedestal, there is no electricity in that wire at that particular time?
That's correct.
And the reason I ask that is it goes back to my concern about someone driving into it and taking it out. So if someone does drive into it and take it out, there is no danger, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but is there no danger in someone getting electrocuted because there's, there's, in fact, no electricity in it?
Right. There is some electricity. We have a little light that says Tesla, so it's a very low voltage, low wattage circuit that would be...
But the high voltage DC is not there until someone plugs in.
That is, yes, that is completely off until it's plugged in.
Interesting. Thank you.
Okay. The curb itself, the concrete island itself, like I said, three feet in width by forty-six feet in length. There is an existing light post, a concrete light post, which we're proposing to shift about five feet inwards. That's just how the site lays out with this, with this concrete curb. And the air pump on-site would be shifted over one stall to accommodate for these eight stalls. We're not creating or removing any stalls, parking stalls. And to answer your question about the bollards, they're actually integrated with the signs. This is a perfect one, the elevation view. So it would be basically three feet steel, concrete filled bollard, and then an additional three feet to the top of the sign, and that would be centered in the parking stall.
I guess we're just like more concerned that somebody could hit one of the things that the bollard's not protecting those, you know what I mean? You could drive right into one. That's our concern.
We changed our ordinance recently.
But they're, but they're offset. I think it...
Well, that's only if someone pulls into the parking spot directly. If they pull on, on the line...
So if someone parks illegally in between two lines, though, but, I mean, I just think we, we just need to look at that. We have bollards proposed in the middle of each of these parking stalls, and then they have the unit place. If we want to see a sea of bollards there, we can do that, but I think given the testimony, there's not an electrical concern, and, you know, I don't know that, I don't know how often we have people actually parking in between parking. I mean, someone would have to totally be in between the lines.
I don't need to be convinced too much about that, just bring it up because we put bollards in front of buildings because people are going through buildings.
Well, and they do have the bollards in the middle of every stall.
Yeah.
So. Keep going.
My question is, you're introducing a forty-six foot long by three foot wide island. How is that going to impact your existing drainage?
The drainage... So the drainage actually flows down towards the west of the property, and this, it would, water flowing, it might get caught in the front of this, but it would continue to flow downwards toward that, towards that property line. It wouldn't be trapped at any location.
So the testimony is there would be no substantial change from the way the site drains now?
No substantial change.
Okay. Please continue.
Well, can I just confirm that in a different way? No substantial change, but it's completely compliant with all stormwater management requirements for the site?
Yes. I guess otherwise, what I haven't brought up would be just the signage. The signs themselves are a typical metal sign. These would be red in color with a Tesla logo, eighteen inches tall by twelve inches wide, and they would sit on that bollard sign combo. Any questions?
Just one follow-up for purposes of the record. There are, in the review letters, there are variances and waivers listed. They're pre-existing. Just for confirmation of same and for the record, we're not proposing to change or alter or exacerbate any of those variances, correct?
These were previously granted as a result of the prior approval.
Correct, and we are not touching any of them.
Ms. Newman, you agree with that?
I do.
That concludes our direct testimony. We'd be happy to answer any questions the board has or the letter.
So that's the engineer's review letter. We also have a planner's letter?
Yes.
Is someone going to address that?
We would be happy to go through it. There are comments listed on page four, starting at the bottom. I don't believe there's anything before that that needs to be addressed. I believe we've addressed A...
The variances and waivers shown as number four on page three are all pre-existing conditions, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Would you like to go through the planning comments as well, or do you want to...
Yeah, item six on...
Sure.
Page four.
Okay, A and B are addressed. C, we addressed the existing parking. D, I believe we addressed through testimony from our Tesla representative.
Well, I just want to backpedal one second.
Sure.
All right. We talked about the existing parking on item C.
Yes.
All right. Can we have some record, testimony on the record?
Sure.
That we don't, we've never seen more than half the site parked or, or something?
Well, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I think what was testified to is that there's ninety parking stalls on the site and twenty-nine are required by our ordinance.
Right. I'm just, I want to verify on record that there's no impact on the parking. I understand that they're well over what's required by ordinance.
Due to the ordinance requirement, Mr. Chairman, we did not perform a parking study. We didn't feel it was warranted here. We can have our engineer testify that it's his opinion that this site will be sufficiently parked. It's also our position that these parking spots are shared, for the most part, with Wawa customers, so we're really not losing any that are there.
So we're talking about really reducing the parking stock from ninety to eighty-eight?
Where twenty-nine are required.
Yeah, all right. Okay, let's move on.
Thank you. D, I believe, was addressed by our testimony from Mr. Misas. E, Mr. Revette, could you address item number E in the planner's letter?
Yes.
Thank you.
And it's not shown in our plan, but I did get the dimension today from, for the drive aisle, from basically the curb down to, or from the end of the stall down to the nearest item that might block the drive aisle, which is the concrete, sorry, pump stations with the concrete area. To the concrete area, there's thirty-two feet, so there's no issues where it's twenty, where it's twenty-two feet or a quarter.
And the stalls are nine by eighteenths?
The proposed stalls are ninety feet by nineteen feet deep.
That's accounting for the island, didn't...
That's, the, yeah.
I'm sorry?
The island isn't accounted in that. The existing stalls, I have that, they were a foot and a half, basically a foot and a half longer, so the three feet adds up. And they're not all perfectly the same size, but so, but generally, it may be a loss of two inches on one side, but not the other.
That's fine. Okay, let's move on.
Okay, item F, are we proposing new directional signage, Mr. Revette?
No.
In this application? How about new lighting, item number G?
No, like I said, the only lighting modification would be the existing lighting being shifted slightly just for the site layout.
And it's your opinion that the lighting that Wawa has on their plans and out there today is sufficient for our Tesla operation?
Yeah, there would be no change to what was approved for Wawa's use.
Item H is the sustainable building practices and LEED certification. I don't believe Wawa was LEED certified. I don't know, I can guess that it was not, but it's our opinion that we're, we're making strides toward what your master plan is, your last reexamination, your master plan has in 2017 by providing the sustainable energy charging for electric vehicles. We'd be happy to submit any further documentation that your board professionals or planner may want, but it's our opinion that we're, we're doing our part, at least, for, for item H. Item I, the non-residential development fee, I don't feel is applicable here. I don't believe we're changing the value of the property at all. I could talk...
That's not for the board to determine. There's a process if you feel that you're exempt from the, from the contribution, but if, if it does apply, then it applies.
We will agree if it applies, and we'll probably file that necessary paperwork. Thank you. And item J is just referral to the board engineer for grading utility and stormwater improvements.
Ms. Newman, any comments on that?
The only outstanding comment I had from my report is just how the construction of this may impact your daily operations.
Sure. Henry, how long did, one up. How long does the typical installation of the charging stations take, start to finish?
Sure. So for a station of this size, we're projecting something in between four to eight weeks of construction. That's including the utility work that would be involved here. We're only talking about electric utility. And as far as the Wawa side of things, we're really not impacting the gas station operation because we're not within the gas fuel canopy area, and neither are we in the C store, the convenience store. You know, if, when we get to building the concrete curb and, you know, doing the trenching, we will close over that area for the duration of that excavation. So, yeah, four to eight weeks and minimal impacts.
Mr. Chairman, with that, I don't have anything further.
Okay, thank you. And the outside permits?
Yes.
I think the, probably the only thing that you have here is the soil erosion sediment control plant?
I believe they are exempt from soil erosion and sediment control because it's less than five thousand square feet of disturbance.
Right, forgot about that. Okay.
Thank you.
So board have any questions of the engineer?
On sheet Z4, is there a charging post on the island? It's labeled 2A. Is that one of the charging posts?
Oh, yes, 2A. So there would be seven in that concrete island and then the existing island. And Henry might be able to talk to this, but this would be a full install. The car itself would, the driver would be facing the curb, whereas all the other stalls it passes.
Okay.
I, the only question I have is, you said out of the stalls, two are going to be exclusive to Tesla only, and the others are going to be shared with Wawa in terms of parking?
Yes.
What's the, what's the differentiator? Because it looks like from the signs, it all is pretty clear.
The signage is different on those two stalls.
Oh, it is, okay.
If you look at Z5, the, there's diagrams of what the signs will read and how they will look.
Oh, perfect.
The dedicated, obviously, Tesla vehicle charging only, and the shared would be a fifteen-minute general parking.
Gotcha.
Good enough.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I've seen none. Open it up to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions for the engineer on this application? Please step forward. I've seen none. I will close the public portion. Do you have any closing comments?
No, no closing remarks. We, we're looking forward to installing this and continuing up the path of New Jersey here with these charging stations. Thank you.
All right, let me just now, anyone in the public who would like to come up and provide testimony for or against this application, please step forward. Seeing none, I will close the public portion. Do I have a motion?
So moved, SP 1065.
Approval?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Boyle's the second.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhaus?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, as always, for your time and consideration. Thanks. Thank you.
Good luck.
Next application is case number SP 1052, Monmouth Commerce Center. It's an application for preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary bulk variance. It's the application of Monmouth Commerce Center LLC and Lawrence Katz and Felix Feister as owners seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval with ancillary bulk variance and design waivers and exceptions to construct nine warehouse buildings ranging in size from eighty-five thousand, six hundred square feet to one hundred and fifty thousand square feet and equalling approximately one million, two hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and two square feet in total. Five full movement access drives along Randolph Road, parking for seven hundred, six vehicles, and one hundred and forty-two trailer parking spaces. Two hundred and thirty-four loading spaces and five monument-style site identification signs on premises known as Block Five, Lots Two and Three at the intersection of Randolph Road and Oakland Road. This application was originally scheduled to be heard on April 4th, 2019, when it was rescheduled to May 9th, 2019. After some testimony was placed on the record on May 9th, 2019, this application was carried to June 6th, 2019 with no further notice. After some additional testimony on June 6th, 2019, this application was carried to June 20th, 2019 with no further notice. And after some testimony on June 20th, 2019, this application was carried to Monday, July 29th, 2019, for a special meeting with no further notice. On July 29th, 2019, the applicant put on additional testimony on the record, and the application was carried to September 19th, 2019 with no further notice. Counselor?
Good evening. I don't remember what I use. Do I need this?
Either one.
Okay. Is this picking up?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Merrill Doncher Sales, Commiss and Gross, representing the applicant, Monmouth Commerce Center LLC. As you've indicated, this is a continuing application. We have been before you a number of times on this application, most recently on July 29th. The application, as you indicated, comprises nine buildings and 1.2 million square feet of space. At the end of the July 29th hearing, prior to our having a dialogue with the board with regard to what was requested in terms of our bringing back some exhibits or revisions, I believe we had been in the middle of the public questioning of our traffic consultant, Justin Taylor. We had submitted a revised driveway access exhibit. It had been requested that we provide additional information and a full set or a more detailed depiction of those entries, as well as a recommendation that we do some reconfiguring of the driveways. We have, we will discuss that with the board this evening. We did present a drawing in advance of the hearing, which was on file as required by statute. And while we are willing to proceed with this alternative design that has been submitted, if the board should determine it prefers it, we believe it is a workable design, but continue to maintain that the original design that we had submitted is the preferable I am going to start with Mr. Taylor, who will address the changes that were made to the plan. I don't know if you need to...
Well, I just want to ask Mr. Cucchiaro. So, we were in the middle of public testimony. Should we stop that portion and go to this application, to the applicant, or should we continue?
My recommendation is, if, you know, there have been some proposed revisions to the plan, it's useful for everyone to know what they are, you know, in order to continue the process. So, I would recommend that the applicant, you know, present what the revisions have been since the last hearing.
Okay. All right, so just so the public understands, because there is a lot of people here tonight for this application, the applicant has made some changes to the proposed plan, which are up on the screen right now. What the board is going to do is, the board and obviously the public, is going to listen to the testimony from the traffic engineer, who's going to outline these changes. Once he's done with his testimony, the board may ask some questions. After the board asks questions, I will reopen the public session to ask questions of the traffic engineer. Okay? That's fine.
Mr. Taylor, I just remind you, you remain under oath.
Understood.
Is the new plan also on the TV screens facing the audience?
Yes.
The others, over there. Both TVs are...
They're facing, there's two right there facing.
All three.
Okay. Can't see it, so, good. Thank you.
Same thing that's up there.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Justin, if you would, please identify what is before the board and the public on the screen.
Yes, it's a plan entitled driveway vehicle circulation exhibit dated 9/1919, prepared by our office.
That was submitted? I don't know if we, if the practice has been, should we mark that, notwithstanding that it was...
Let me just see.
The one I have is 8/26/19.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
The one that we have is dated 8/26/19.
All right, so this is updated for today's date?
It's updated with today's date.
So we'll mark this as 8/29.
If we're going to do that, Ron, we probably should just mark it as a set of two of two. Really, the change was, we added an overall page, didn't change anything on the original exhibit, but added a secondary page of a blow-up of the entire site to show, to highlight some of the changes that were made as part of the driveways.
Why don't you just give me like a quick description? What should we call it?
We call it driveway vehicle circulation exhibit one of two and two of two. There are two sheets to that.
How about driveway circulation exhibit dated 9/19?
Perfect.
I'm sorry, Eileen, we only have sheet one here.
I don't have what he's talking about. They were not presented to the board.
Okay, can we clarify? You will have the second one. We brought it as an exhibit. What happened is, if you scroll, you only have a portion of what's up there. There is a small, a reduced drawing on the bottom of that page. If you can move it up. There is a small version of the overall plan, which incorporates changes that were requested. What we did this evening is bring a blow-up. That's what the second page is. Am I correct?
You are correct.
There were, my understanding is, there were no changes to what was submitted, but because that was small, what we did is blew, made a blow-up of the reduced portion of the plan and made that a second page. That's what bears today's date. The substance of what's up there is exactly the same. The bottom, that small version, is now blown up, and we can hand those out in eleven by seventeen, as well as putting it up in a full size on the board.
Yeah, could we do that now?
Sure. Absolutely.
Time to open this up. Things like medically sealed.
How many did you bring? How many have you had?
I have twenty.
Okay. I don't know if they need that. On the second page, because I want to give the counsel for the objector she gets up, which is merely the same. I'll get it. I don't think they need to, well, they've got a lot of people over there.
They added square footage. That's up here. put...
Oh, I'm sorry. We're just going to have everyone enter their appearance. Any other attorneys here tonight, if you just enter your appearance?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, counsel. Craig Bossong, B-O-S-S-O-N-G, from the law firm Florio Perucci Steinhardt and Capelli, on behalf of the objectors' hope.
Mr. Bossong, you had submitted, I guess, a revised letter listing all of the individual members of the objector group. Is that still accurate, or are there any changes that need to be made to that?
No changes since the last time.
Okay, thank you.
And then, just for the record, we did just receive the exhibit that's been passed out from counsel.
Okay.
Okay, so you have...
Thank you. All right, Justin, I would ask that you describe what the changes are that are reflected, or describe the entry, the access points that are shown on here, and then move through and describe what's on the second sheet as well.
Absolutely. Over the past couple hearings, we've been hearing some of the concerns of the board about how the driveways are going to operate and how the truck circulation is really going to work. So we had the opportunity to go back over the last month or so and take a hard look at that. Part of the concern was the width of the driveway and the thirty feet that we were showing in excess of that. Some of it was the multiple access points, some of it was some internal circulation. And so what we had the ability to do, as I said, is go back and really take a hard look at things. So, we were able, in reviewing this, to not eliminate any driveways. We really feel that the circulation and the separation between the trucks and the passenger vehicles is necessary for better circulation on the site. But we had the ability to take a look at how we could bring things in and bring things out. In doing that, we looked to minimize the number of exiting driveways or egress driveways on the site and try and concentrate them down a little bit further, so you only had a certain, we had fewer driveways where vehicles would be leaving the site and turning out onto Randolph Road. So we, what we did was, as we worked from west to east, we have driveways, the westernmost driveway was narrowed, the radii coming in were increased to accommodate two WV-67s turning without any conflict, staying within their own lanes. We then moved to the secondary driveway, driveway B.
Can I just, there's, they are labeled. Can you refer to them as they're labeled on the plan?
Yes.
The one you were referring to before, which you called the most westerly, that's also the diagram at the top and to the left?
That is correct. It's driveway A.
A, thank you.
In our exhibit. And so that would be maintained as a full movement driveway. As I said, we had the ability to increase some of the radii, put a compound curve in there to facilitate the tractor-trailers turning to and from the site. As we move east along the property, driveway entrance B, that, as you remember, travels directly into the loading bays, into the loading bays between building A and building B. Originally, this had been proposed as a full movement driveway. What we felt was, given the internal circulation roadways that are proposed throughout the development, that we could reduce that to an entrance-only driveway, allowing the tractor-trailers to come in off of Randolph Road and then circulate to the loading docks, but not allowing them to exit there. We feel that they could travel to the west and come out through entrance A. As we move to, further to the east in the center driveway, which provides parking for buildings B and building C, that is maintained at a thirty-foot width and full movement for the passenger vehicles. We then travel further east to driveway D, which provides access to the loading docks between C and D. That, again, has been maintained as a full movement driveway to the truck, for the trucks to access the loading bays. We attempted to arrive at a thirty-foot driveway. We ended up at approximately thirty-two feet, and I'll get, there's a reason behind that, and I'll get to that as I talk about the next driveway. But, again, that provides access to and from the loading docks for those two, for those two buildings, as well as buildings I and H in the rear. As we move further east, we were able to take a look and actually introduce an access aisle interior to the site for passenger vehicles that would want to travel and access the buildings, building E and building D. Now, this required us to reduce building D, the length of the building, to accommodate that access aisle, but it did allow a frontage movement along the front of building D to access both the loading docks and the passenger vehicle parking spaces between buildings D and building Z, and then along the eastern, easternlymost side of building E. As we traveled to the last driveway, all the way to the east, which was originally designed as a full movement driveway for passenger vehicles, again, given the opportunity to exit in other locations, we have redesigned this to be an entrance-only driveway, again, eliminating any interaction between vehicles further east at Oakland Road. And given the other opportunities and the internal circulation roadway, we feel that the passenger vehicles that are associated with buildings D, E, and I can utilize the central driveway or driveway C, we're traveling all the way to the northern, or the western end of the property and utilize access aisle A to exit the site. We felt that we still wanted to keep the separation between the tractor-trailers and the passenger vehicles, and we felt that giving them locations to enter the site separately provided for a better design alternative, but knowing that the board had some concerns with a number of driveways, we thought that by eliminating the egress movements at some of these, that would really clean up what was going on along Randolph Road.
Is C automobile-only?
C is automobile-only, that's correct.
And the box that you're showing on the vehicle you're showing, is that a, is that a fire truck? Is that why it's so large?
That's correct. So we wanted to ensure that emergency vehicles would be able to enter and exit safely through the passenger vehicle driveways, and so the truck circulation shown on that is a fire Something else that had come up at the last hearing was the entrance at driveway B and how they were, the trucks were entering directly into the parking area or the loading dock area. So with the elimination of the egress movement for this, it allowed us to move the driveway around a little bit. And now what we are proposing is that it will enter directly in the middle of the loading dock aisles, similar to the entrance at, entrance D, so that we remove the interaction of the vehicle between any other tractor-trailer backing into or departing from a loading dock. I know that was one of the concerns of the board. Now, as they enter, they have the visibility to make the decision to go left or right in that island, and it really cleans up that maneuver. So to hit on, as I said, we needed to accommodate the interior access aisle, we needed to reduce the size of building D. We also had the ability to increase the sizes of buildings B and C in that area, and so what we end up with is a net zero change in square footage. Nothing's changing in the overall square footage, we just shrunk the length of building, of building D by a little bit, removing approximately six thousand square feet, and we made up the difference in the two of those in building B and building C, adding three thousand square feet to each of them to overall maintain the same amount of square footage that was originally proposed.
So, Mr. Taylor, is driveway A, is that for trucks or can autos use that?
It's for both vehicles. We do anticipate both trucks and passenger vehicles utilizing that site only for the employees of building A and possibly building F. But we do have, pretty quickly, as you enter the site, there's the entrance to the parking field that will then separate the passenger vehicles and the trucks, as the trucks use the main circulation aisle to arrive at bays to the rear of the property.
What, I appreciate the changes, okay? And one of the concerns that I had and Chief had, who's not here tonight, is that we had talked about trying to configure the driveways to make sure that the trucks did not try to go east on Randolph Road, that we were going to, if you will, make it a very tight radius and skew it to kind of force the vehicles to go to the west. Would you comment on that?
So, by eliminating the egress maneuver from entrance B, we've now pushed the trucks further back towards entrance A. We also have minimized the radii. Now, the inbound radii of both of those are large in order to accommodate the entering vehicle, entering tractor-trailer, but the outbound, I believe, are 25 feet, which is typical for a passenger vehicle, but not necessarily a large tractor-trailer. And we feel that that, along with the signage and the education of the tenants, will be enough to dissuade the vehicles from going to the west, or to the east, excuse me. Because, again, the path of least resistance to Route 195 is out to County 547 and up through there, and that's really the path that the vehicles, that the trucks are going to want to take and that their GPS is going to take them.
How much, I'm sorry, I don't recall from your traffic study what the distribution of the site traffic is. How much is going to the south?
We anticipate approximately 20% of the employees to be drawn from the Lakewood-Tomes River area to the south via 547 or Lakewood-Farmiddel, and maybe another 10% or so that might come up Brook from points further east and in that direction.
Well, what my concern is, is that when you can't, as we talked about, we have a problem with the intersection of Randolph and County Road 547. All right? It's failing now, and it's going to fail in the future unless the traffic signal goes in. And my concern is, is that people are going to realize the easy way to go south and east is not to wait in a long queue to make that left turn, but those vehicles are going to use Randolph to go to Oakland, to go to Brook, and come around that one. And that was kind of the reason why the board was requesting to see if we could dissuade that traffic. I can appreciate your comment about that the 25-foot radius makes it difficult for a tractor-trailer. I concur with you on that. What my problem is, is that tractor-trailer is simply going to just go farther into Randolph, encroaching into the opposite direction of traffic to make his turn to go to the east, especially if it's congested at Randolph and 547. So, I appreciate these changes. I think we're moving in the right direction, my personal opinion, but I would like to have you revisit just the configuration of the egress at these access drives.
I think it's something we could definitely work on. We can work with the board's professionals, should this application be approved, to come up with a smaller radius or something to further discourage that.
So, we know that you're probably going to be coming back a couple more times. I can appreciate you could work with our professionals, but I don't want to leave that pressure on them. All right? It's something that I think the board should take a look at. So, could you think about it? And the next time you come back, we just, we can have a little more discussion about this?
Sure.
All right. The second thing is, with the elimination of one of the egresses, all right, how does your levels of service recompute?
I think that's a great segue into the other piece of information that we submitted to the board for their review. There was questions at the last hearing from the board's professionals on the operation of the proposed driveways. And so, we had the ability.
Hold on.
Excuse me. I don't want to get too much into any of the newer areas until we, you know, play back and get back to the public. The idea was to give them a better idea of what we were introduced this evening and then go back to that public portion. So, I just don't want to get too far down a road when we really need to be back on track.
Well, I think this is relevant, Deputy Mayor, in that they're eliminating one of the egress, which means that they're putting more traffic on the other four egress drives, and I think it's to the benefit of the public to know whether that is a detrimental effect or not.
Two, they're eliminating two entrances.
Yes.
It's two, yeah.
The driveway.
There's going to be only three entrances. No, maybe five entrances and three egresses.
And three egresses, okay.
Driveway E, which is a passenger vehicle, also eliminated the egress movement, given some of the concerns the board raised about its proximity to Oakland Road.
Right, okay. So, I gave you the segue, all right?
Absolutely. We submitted to the board a traffic study supplement dated September 9th, 2019. Within that, we analyzed the configuration of the driveways as are illustrated in the driveway circulation exhibit.
Exhibit A 29.
Including the elimination and the reduction of egress movements to the three driveways. Based upon the volumes and the anticipated distribution that we have, we're anticipating levels of service C or better on all of the driveways during both the AM and PM peak hours.
And just to be specific, that's the exit movement?
That is the egress movement. All entering movements are operating at levels of service A.
Okay, can I have a quick question? Mr. Taylor, the analysis you did, that's based on the three egress only? Because my understanding, the analysis is assuming still the five egresses.
No, no. We are, for each one of these, the, I call it the east-center driveway, which is driveway B, is just to turn, no, I apologize, Jim. I am incorrect in that statement. It is the old geometry with all five egresses. That is correct. But given the, given the levels of service C that we anticipate, the addition of, the addition of the vehicles that would be transposed onto the other driveways, I don't anticipate having any real detrimental, things will still operate at good levels of service.
But you could give us a revised analysis showing that construction.
If it's something that, you know, we heard the concerns of the board, we wanted to present this new alternative. If it's something that they, you know, is appealing, then absolutely, we can provide the analysis for those.
Yes, we want the analysis.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I also just want to confirm that that statement concerning the levels of service still is under the assumption that there's going to be a traffic signal that does not currently exist.
That is correct. That anticipates the distribution of vehicles traveling to the west to 547. Given the way capacity works for added intersection, if those vehicles were to switch from being a left turn out of the driveway to a right turn out of the driveway, the delay actually would go down. The level service would probably get better because it's easier to make a right out of a driveway than it is to make a left.
Well, your driveways are being set up for left turn only.
No, they're not.
Oh, not left turn only, but favoring left turn movements?
For the tractor-trailers, that's correct.
For the tractor-trailers, it's my understanding, the testimony was that there'd be condition on tractor-trails to be directed left through operational management and through physical, you know, physical improvements.
Yes, that's correct.
But right turns for vehicles will be permitted?
Right turn for passenger vehicles will be permitted. That's correct.
So, Mr. Taylor, I'm asking you, when you did that, did you do individual HCM runs for the each intersection, or did you do a synchro model because of the, I'm concerned about the spillback in the queue from 547 and Randolph affecting the driveways?
All these volumes anticipate, have been done in synchro in a full simulation model, taking into account the operation of the adjacent intersections. It does incorporate the installation of the traffic signal at 547 and Randolph Road, though.
Was their analysis done without that signal?
No, there has not been.
I.
Would that be prudent?
Yeah, that would be prudent.
But we can testify to the fact that there's another way to go.
Yeah, but by the same token, we don't have to make them go that way. They're public streets. We have access on other streets that we chose not to use. Why? But I think we need to do it, but this is all not because we have to do it, because we were willing to do it to accommodate. I'm sorry, are we in the middle of a question?
No, Mr. Nacastrell asked, and I agree with him, all right? Where, you know, I understand that you're only a portion of the traffic that in the future, if we do approve this, that will be at this problematic intersection. And, you know, quite frankly, I'm having an issue, not because of what I just said, but we all know that Monmouth County is not going to put a signal there in any great rush, all right? And we have to understand what the impact, I understand that you're not causing it, but what the impact is of this development operating with the signal not being at the intersection.
Wait, wait. I'll take it even further.
Go ahead.
Is the site access under our purview on the MLUL?
That's what I wanted to focus on.
That's what I want to focus on.
Right. Is that, you know, it is a permitted use, so a general increase in traffic in the area is not something that's very specifically under this board's jurisdiction. However, the safety of the ingress and egress is directly under this board's jurisdiction. So, I think, you know, the questioning, the way that I understood it, and the reason I had asked the question that I did, was to understand the impact that the lack of a signal would have on those issues that are under the board's jurisdiction, which is the ingress and egress. Not whether, you know, there'd be a lot of traffic in the area, whether the people would be waiting a long time or not, but more specifically, is there an impact on the ingress and egress because, you know, the model that you have doesn't include it? So, I think, you know, in terms of the legality of what we can look at, I think that is the focus of that, you know, area of inquiry.
Right, and that's what Mr. Taylor represented, is that the impact on the driveways assumes that there's going to be a signal at 547 and Randolph Road. And what Mr. Nacastrell and myself are asking for is that if it's not signalized, there is going to be backup of the queue on Randolph Road, which will directly impact the operation of the driveways, specifically the egress movement. So, I'm asking, all right, if you can perform the synchro analysis with the stop condition and not the signal.
I mean, yes, it's something we could perform. I think what needs to be kept in mind here is that we have the ability to make the right turns out of these driveways. We, at the concern of the boards and in out of respect for the neighbors, we are prohibiting the volume, the traffic, the truck traffic from going that way. But there's that ability, and there's a surrounding existing roadway network that could be utilized by the traffic from this project that we're not doing, out of consideration for the surrounding people. Given that, there's the ability to access Brook Road. I mean, we have frontage along Brook Road. We could bring a driveway out to Brook Road, and it was discussed early on in this project that that was not a good alternative because of the neighbors and because of the residential people in that area. So, we took a step back, and we looked at locating all of our access points along Randolph Road. Then, out of the concern that we heard from the surrounding neighbors, we've agreed to prohibit trucks from traveling to the east and forcing them all to the west. But there is a roadway network that people can utilize to get where they want to go, and it is a public street without weight restrictions that could be utilized. So, I understand the board's concern.
But I don't think you do. I don't think that's exactly what the board, or at least certain members of the board were expressing a concern about, not whether there's weight limitations, whether there's a road network. They had a singular focus on the impact on ingress and egress as a result of that traffic signal, which does not exist, not being put in in the future. What they've been provided is a model that assumes the traffic signal. They're not looking at the general road network necessarily. They're looking at what happens to the safety of ingress and egress if that traffic signal is not stalled.
I mean, I think what will happen is vehicles will find other directions to go. They're not going to sit in that queue for that long. They're going to end up making a right turn out.
Does that include tractor-trailers?
It's possible, yeah. It very is.
Are the right turn curb radii set up for tractor-trailer right turn movements?
They're not at this point, but they could be, but they very easily could be.
All right. That's not what you're proposing.
Well, I think the, if I can just jump in, we've set up a design for this, which accommodated certain concerns that were raised, provided to us at the outset of the design of the project, and that's what caused us to design it for a left turn. And that's also why there's no access along our other frontage. If there were access along that other frontage, which there is no prohibition from our having, it would distribute the traffic in a different manner, and it would obviate some of these issues that you're raising. So, what we don't want is to end up, because of circumstances beyond our control and our desire to accommodate concerns that were raised, to then create a circumstance that is then going to be a basis to impact our ability to develop the project because we're attempting to address municipal concerns that were raised with us. If there were driveways on Brook, there would be less traffic coming out on Randolph. There would be, it would be distributed over a greater number of driveways. That's not prohibited by the ordinance or by any other restriction. That's why it was designed the way it was, because we were encouraged not to have that, not because there's a prohibition. Our direction of the traffic towards one particular intersection, again, was in response to a desire to focus the traffic in that direction, not because of any requirement that it be in that manner. What we don't want to happen is for circumstances beyond our control to then become the reason why the board finds there's a problem with our egress, which we designed to accommodate concerns that were presented to us.
Ma'am, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to, were you done?
For the moment.
But I certainly didn't mean for the remainder of the application, but.
That's not going to happen.
You know, and you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong, and you have no reluctance to what I am. There was no direction given to the applicant concerning the existence of the traffic signal. I mean, that was part of the model that was submitted to the board at the inception of the application, that that was part of what was necessary for the site to work. I mean, there was no recommendation, hey, you need to put a traffic light in, right?
No, it, what, but what you're leaving out is if the traffic was directed to that intersection.
Okay.
You know, my opinion is, my opinion is, is that the applicant is supposed to reveal the conditions that will result when your development is in place, all right? The board understands that we don't have control over the off-site traffic conditions. It's not under our purview, all right, because it's a permitted use. But we can't sit here and approve an application that's assuming a traffic signal is going to be operating, giving us far better capacity on the Randolph Road approach.
Well, Mr. Chairman, it could pass.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if you're listening to the discussion here, it sounds like the applicant may be setting themselves up such that if, in fact, we do act favorably on the application, that we heard testimony that the traffic study is based upon a signal. So the approval may be approved upon the signal going there.
I don't think that's what the applicant is proposing, to tell you the truth.
The applicant has put on the record, Mr. Tannenhouse, that they will enter into an agreement with Monmouth County to contribute their fair share-
Mr. Chairman, I think the applicant needs to place this on the record themselves.
Okay.
And to be fair, we received comments from the county today that are not even indicative of that at this point, what they've asked for is a warrant analysis.
So let me, let me just be very clear, so that everyone can-
We'll clarify that, that's not completely, they did ask for it, but not because they don't have it.
Okay, can I just ask some questions, so that the board can be very clear what's being proposed? The applicant is not proposing that they receive an approval contingent upon the traffic signal. I mean, the applicant will contribute prorata to a traffic signal if that's what the county wants, but my understanding of what has been presented is that the applicant is asking for an approval, and they believe that as a permitted use, that approval should be granted whether the county eventually puts in a traffic signal or not. Is that, is that correct, or is that incorrect?
That's correct.
So, Mr. Tannenhouse, the assumption you are operating under is incorrect. That's not what the applicant is proposing.
And I think we go back to what Mr. Chairman is, the chairman is saying, that we don't have a traffic study that-
Well, that's my second question. Here's what I'd like to know, and look, it's, obviously, the applicant's application, you present what you feel you need to present. The board, some board members have asked whether the applicant believes it would be prudent to provide additional analysis without, you know, sort of existing conditions without the traffic signal. What would this project look like if the county decided that there's not going to be a traffic signal? And look, like I said, the applicant can do what it wants to, but I think the board should just know, is that information it will receive, or is that information it will not receive?
I mean, I can opine to start off with, on the operation of the driveways.
I would like just to know, is that analysis, would the board receive? And you may not be the, I mean, you may have to take a couple minutes and go back and speak to a client. We fully understand that, but I think the board and the public should know whether that is a supplement to the report it will receive, or it will not receive. And counsel, do you want to take a couple minutes, or?
Can actually, we're going to take a 10-minute break here.
Perfect.
All right, so, yes, you can pow out. All right, we're going to take a 10-minute break. Well, the public, we'll announce the next date of this meeting, because we're obviously not going to finish tonight. When we get to, and 10:30 is going to be a hard stop, all right? And if you're in mid-sentence, it's going to be a hard stop.
Understood.
Okay.
I think he was looking at me. He let you finish.
He does what you tell him. All right, can we call the roll?
Sure. Mr. Boyle?
Here.
Mr. Dorado?
Here.
Mr. Husser?
Here.
Mr. Nacastro?
Here.
Mr. Schneider?
Yeah.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Here.
And Chairman Nash?
Present.
Everyone still accounted for, thank you.
All right, we didn't lose anybody.
No. They all came back.
Okay, counselor?
Yes, picking up where we left off. Mr. Taylor, are you, you've indicated that you are confident that you can demonstrate that the driveways will function safely if there is no signal at the county-controlled intersection, is that accurate?
Yes, it's my opinion that we can do the analysis and provide the board that information that they will operate safely, even without the installation of the signal.
Okay, and you will prepare that analysis for submission to the board?
Yes, yes, I will.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, can you, there was a reference, you cover what you wanted to mean?
There's a couple other things we can go through the Friday and the peak hour, I don't know if we have to.
Let's do that, and also the report that we resubmitted from February? I don't think you've got a question for that. All right, there had been a question raised during the cross-examination previously with regard to the impact of some bridge closures. There had been a report submitted dated February 19, I believe, 2019. We just wanted to make note that that was resubmitted since the last meeting, and I'll ask Justin to just address that issue that had been raised.
Absolutely, there was some concern at the last meeting about the bridge closures and the time that our traffic counts were conducted back in September and October of 2018. What Ms. Gonchar was referring to is a report that was done by McDonnell and Ray, and that I had alluded to at the last meeting, that we have supplied to the board. In summary, on August 13th, there was a major rainstorm that caused the closure of a bridge to the east of our study area along Allenwood Lakewood Road. However, that was repaired and opened at the time of the counts that we did in September and October. There was a bridge on Ramtown Greenville Road that was damaged and did remain closed during the duration, because it took a longer time to fix the bridge. However, the detour route began and ended prior to any of the intersections within our study area, and so it's my opinion that it would not have impacted any of the volumes that were conducted during those time periods.
Okay.
All right, please, can we have order?
Okay, and then there had also been a question about the dates or times when some of the counts had been done, and whether they accurately reflected normal or the optimum or worst-case conditions, whatever the objection was. Can you address the, what you've done to analyze whether that was a reason for concern?
Yes, and as the chairman had asked, we were able to go back into some of the files that we have as a firm, and obtained an automatic traffic recorder that we conducted up closer to Herbertsville Road, but along County Route 547, for the period of one week. And what we found was that the Friday afternoon counts in that ATR were pretty much in the middle of a full week's worth of counts. They were lower than some, they were higher than some, and what it does is show that the Friday afternoon are representative of what's out there. They're not much lower, given the traffic conditions that we might anticipate through this area.
So you would say that using that information in the count does present an accurate depiction of the traffic conditions?
Yes, the volumes that were utilized within the traffic study do show an accurate prediction of the volumes that are out there. And the final thing in the report that had come up at the last meeting was just some question about the peak hour factors that were being utilized in our analysis. We had the opportunity to review our traffic study and identified that within each part of the analysis, the actual peak hour factors for each intersection were being utilized, and that the data of the analysis presented in our submitted traffic study is accurate.
What are the peak hours?
So actually, for a network such as this, sometimes we would actually count all the intersections, figure out what globally the peak hour was, and then utilize those volumes. In order to be a little more conservative here, we actually used the individual peak hour at each intersection, and then balanced all of those volumes up to be the highest volume. So it's, I could go intersection by intersection with you, but we didn't have a specific hour at each intersection. They varied slightly within the hours counted. We did count, I believe it was 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM in the morning, and 3:00 to 6:00 in the evening, but let me, 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM, and 3:30 to 6:30 PM. So they fall within those time periods.
So is, are you saying that you found the worst case at each intersection?
That's correct, and then, beyond that, we balanced all the volumes up to the highest volumes within that worst-case scenario. So there's a, there's conservative, the analysis of the volumes are really conservative in this, and they've been increased to account for all of that.
The board's engineer referenced the fact that we did make a submission to the county since our last, right, since our last appearance?
Correct.
And we did receive a timely letter, I think today, in response. Will you address?
Before we do that, counsel, is that, is that something we have, that we should mark there?
You're talking about the planning board, Monmouth County Planning Board? Yeah, that's on here.
Right, they did, you received it.
It's B-32 on the exhibit list.
All right. Within that letter, what was requested was that the warrant report be updated to encompass the traffic associated with our project, as well as the traffic associated with the transfer station and 41 Randolph in this area.
All right, let me ask you a question. When you submitted to the county, what was included in our traffic study? Had we provided the results of a warrant analysis that we undertook with regard to that intersection?
Yes, we have.
Okay.
The analysis that was contained within the traffic study only contemplated the existing traffic volumes out there. They've asked us to surcharge the proposed development, as well as some of the other approved developments in the area, onto there. I had a conversation with the traffic engineer at the county, Vince Cardone, and he said it was a request of the Development Review Committee. As he and I discussed, with the existing volumes, and I believe I testified to this previously, with the existing volumes, the four-hour, eight-hour, and peak-hour warrants within the MUTCD are met.
Within the MUTC, what does that mean?
The Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which is a FHWA publication that is utilized to determine whether certain conditions are met to warrant a traffic signal.
Okay, and a warrant study is just the study to see if the signal is warranted at that intersection?
That's correct.
Okay, I just want-
I'm sorry if I'm being too technical.
Okay, and so we had provided, when you say existing, so the warrant study that we provided was based on current conditions without our project or any of the other approved but unbuilt or unapproved projects that are contemplated in the area?
That's correct.
Okay, and what they're asking you to do is to include the industrial development that was approved across the street from our site?
That's correct.
And to include the transfer station that has not been approved?
That's correct, as well as our project that has not been approved.
Okay.
But given the fact that the existing conditions meet the volume warrants, the results of the warrant study aren't going to change. The intersection is going to continue to warrant a traffic signal based upon those volume warrants.
Do you know why they're asking for a stu, information and a study which has already been proven?
It baffles me.
Okay. Okay, and did you also discuss with him, as we had discussed, since it's not within the jurisdiction of this board and not within the power of the applicant, to approve a traffic signal even though the warrants have been met? Did you have a further discussion with anybody at the county about the signal itself?
We had, yes, we had a brief conversation about the consideration of a signal at this location. And while the county doesn't have it on their capital improvement programs, it was the indication that should a private developer look to construct a signal, and that the volumes were met, that the county would not have an issue with a signal actually physically at that location.
Could you repeat that sound?
Probably not.
So what was said was, if the warrants are met, and a developer or a non-county-funded entity wanted to construct a signal there, that the county should not have any objections to the construction of a signal at that location, being as the fact that the warrants are met.
Respectfully, could you anticipate such an occurrence actually happening?
Yes.
Are you proposing that? Is the applicant proposing that?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Are you proposing to put up the traffic light?
We're not proposing to put it up.
So how could he testify that it's foreseeable that a private entity will put that up? Is that what I'm hearing?
I think what they, did he also speak to you about others who might have to contribute to the cost of that?
Yes, I mean, the other developments, I mean, within the approval that this board granted for 41 Randolph, there was the contemplation of a traffic signal, and there was an application of a fair share contribution fee towards that traffic signal.
I think, just to be clear, because I think, and it's understandable for, you know, those of us who are in this every day, when you were saying that a private entity could pick up the cost, I think a little bit more on, you know, the background of a prorata contribution, that it goes to the county, you know, and the county would be orchestrating the improvement, not, it's not like, you know, some private property owner goes and says, hey, I'm just going to put up this traffic light in county unless you tell me not to. So I think a little bit on the process, so that, you know, the board understands, you know, more specifically, you know, why you were referencing, you know, private entities picking up the cost.
Is it your, your understanding that what the county was saying is that if the signal was funded, I guess I should ask, the gentleman you were speaking to did not have the authority independently to approve a signal, is that true?
That's correct.
Okay, so his unwillingness to make that commitment was based on the fact that he had no authority to do that, that's your understanding?
That's my understanding.
Okay, so this was, you were speaking in hypotheticals, is that fair?
Yes.
Okay, and is it your understanding that what you were hearing was hypothetically, if the funding came from a source other than the county, that the county should not have a problem with approving and installing the light there?
That's correct.
The hypothetical sounded so real, I actually took him for his word.
Took him for his word?
I took him for his word, yeah.
Whose word?
His exact words, the exact words that he testified to, that if someone wanted to do it, the county said, you know, basically, we won't stand in your way. So I thought that we were opening up the door to the possibility of the application also funding a light. But not the case.
I'm sure you understand that these two private individuals, the expert and the county employee did not have the power to do that.
That's why I asked for some greater clarification of the statement.
I just wouldn't want anyone to think that, you know, anyone that's sitting here to think that it's quite simple, you know, someone says, I'll pay for it, and it just happens, that's not the case. So it's a process that's very involved.
Yep.
Just wanted to make it clear.
Okay. Is that the end of Mr. Taylor's testimony?
Not at this time, obviously, we'll be back.
Yes.
With this witness.
Well, I'm going to ask if the board has any questions, and then, yes, we are going to go back to the public. Does the board have any questions, Mr. Taylor?
That's a good question. I, we're not objecting, but the traffic consultant is coming back, so I don't know if we end up in the same place that you started today with-
Well, you know, I, to be fair, these people who sat here for, you know, meetings, all right? I would think that maybe through the questioning, there might be some guidance that's given to the applicant as to what would work and would not work for the public. So I'm at this point where I would like to open it up to questions, all right? I want everyone to understand the process. I know there's a lot of frustration, because you want to get up and you want to speak, but we have a procedure, so that everybody gets a fair shot, all right? At this time, I'm going to ask anyone who wants to come up and ask a question, there will be a period where I will allow you to get up and testify and say whatever you want, but right now, it's questions for the traffic engineer.
Mr. Chairman, also, just a matter of procedure, and we've said it before, but I'll just repeat it, if you are represented by counsel, then your counsel asks the questions. You will certainly be able to testify later on, but only your attorney can ask questions if you're represented by counsel. And then, Mr. Chairman, I would just-
I'm going to ask, I'm going to bring Mr. Boson up first. Mr. Boson, do you have questions that you want to ask?
I do, but in deference to the board, if you want me to defer to allow the public since they're here, I'll defer, you know, I would defer to them. It's like we did the last time.
Mr. Chairman, it's not a matter of, first of all, you know, I don't know how many people here are represented by counsel, but, you know, as a matter of law, you know, there's no requirement. Mr. Boson may be in a better position to ask questions in a way that helps other members of the public, you know, or maybe even, you know, answers their questions for them, but, you know, it's up to the board.
All right, yeah, I'm going to listen to Mr. Cucci. Alright, yeah, I'm gonna listen to Mr. Cucciara, I'm gonna let Mr. Boson go, alright? If Mr. Boson does not finish by 10:30, and if he's in mid-sentence, we're gonna stop, alright? I will, at the next meeting, immediately open it up as soon as Mr. Boson is done, to the public, okay? Mr. Boson.
Thank you. As a matter of just Craig Boson, Florio Purgis, Senator Campelli, on behalf of the collective residents who formed HOPE, the, Mr. Taylor, the synchro model that you were talking about earlier regarding the egresses, have those been provided to the board?
Yes, we submitted a letter on September 9th, the results of which the analysis are contained within that, of the driveway analysis.
Okay, I'll get a copy of that, thank you.
I have, actually...
Do you have an extra copy of that?
I do.
You know, I don't sleep at night, so this is good reading for me.
I'm being told, actually, the actual computer files, not the printouts.
No, we have provided the capacity analysis printouts from the synchro analysis.
Okay, and is there any intention to submit the actual computer files on that?
There had not been.
The calculation, okay. Cause I just wanted the board to...
Well, I just, just for the low-tech crowd that I represent, what computer files are you referring to?
So the capacity analyses that we conducted are done utilizing several different types of software. The package that we utilize for this report is called Synchro, we're using Synchro version 10, and it really utilizes the formulas within the Highway Capacity Manual to calculate capacity.
So is there like raw data in there or something, or...
So essentially, we compiled the data from the traffic counts that we conducted, and then the trip generation analysis that we have done for the proposed project, and the signal timings that we obtained from the county, and all that goes into the model, and then the output is the worksheets that are contained in the report.
Alright, so then what the board got was the output, not all of the data that went into the, you know, the algorithms or whatever?
No, all the pieces of data were all contained within the study. We provided the traffic counts, we provided the signal timings, and we provided the outputs. We just haven't provided, nor do we typically provide, the actual computer file.
Is that something that can be done?
Well, can I ask, Mr. Boson, what's the objective? What are you looking for?
We, so the board knows, we have our own traffic engineer that we intend to put on when the applicant has completed their analysis, their affirmative testimony, so I would intend my traffic engineer to look to make sure the data that has been inputted that results in your final product that's been presented to you is accurate and hasn't been manipulated in any sort, any way.
So, the, because I know about this, okay? The output sheets that are provided in the report provide you the data necessary for your engineer to regenerate the model. Mr. Cucciara, what he's asking for is simply to make it easier for his traffic engineer to review the inputs.
So then, I just ask Mr. Taylor again, is that, is that something that can just be provided, then?
No.
Just out of curiosity, why?
The honest answer? I'd rather not make his life...
You're under oath, so yes.
Thank you. I'd rather not make his life any easier.
No, 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 that's not how it works. That's really not how it works here, Mr. Taylor, and I think you know that.
Why? We've never been asked to provide that. Why are we providing that? Your engineer accepted the information, it didn't question...
Can you provide me a case or a statute that says if a piece of information will make analysis by another party easier, it should be withheld?
Well, if it's something that's required, I would agree.
Doesn't a county ask for that simple, that those synchro files all the time with their reviews?
Sometimes they do, sometimes they do not. They haven't in this case, with the submission of what we have.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
From a legal perspective, I haven't heard anything, you know, that the board could possibly rely upon to say that that information should not be provided. It doesn't sound as if, based upon the answer, it's impossible to provide, or even difficult to provide.
So what's your suggestion?
My suggestion would be that if the applicant is unwilling to provide that, and it's information which is capable of being provided, that, you know, it's not, it is not beyond reasonable, under the municipal land use law, to take whatever data they used to confirm that their conclusions were correct.
I'm not aware of any law that requires an applicant to provide information of work product from their consultants to be provided to an objector, particularly if an objector has their own consultant who's capable of doing it.
What if the board requests it in order to determine the accuracy of the results?
Well, I think the record will show that the board did not, nor did their consultant. We've had reviews from the consultants and the county, and no one has questioned it.
That was not my question, but I accept the answer. So if the board felt that it was useful to provide that information, it doesn't sound like there's an objection from the applicant.
The purpose of benefiting an objector? I'd like that on the record, that that's why they're asking for it.
I would counsel the board that the purpose of any piece of information is to help the board determine and deliberate in the process, and whether the objector raises an issue, whether the board raises an issue, the fact that an issue is raised is what's important, and there is case law on that.
Let me ask our traffic engineer, Mr. Wazkowski, would you like those files?
Well, I mean, we have all the design variables in the traffic report that was submitted, and we could take the time and charge, which we normally have to do, is the applicant's escrow, to create the synchro, fold a file, and run the model ourselves, and provide that to the objector. Or the applicant can save a lot of time and save our time from importing the files into synchro, and we're sharing it to the objector, they could do that too, so it's up to them.
And if you don't...
It's not up to them, that's not, that's not the legal standard.
Yeah, I don't think that's...
Is that useful to the, is it useful information for the board in this process?
Yes.
May we just ask if that has been for the record? Were we requested to provide that to your consultant prior to tonight? I'd just like it on the record.
I don't know.
Was that information requested of us?
No, not until tonight.
I don't think it has been requested tonight yet. I think all that has been asked right now is whether that information would be useful or not. The board has not made a request.
The record will be clear at this time.
And for the record, alright, I'm requesting that Mr. Taylor provide the synchro files for all the study conditions to both the opposition attorney and to our traffic engineer.
We'll deliver it to the board.
Okay.
I'd request that it be delivered at least 10 days prior to the next hearing?
Agreed.
We're not asked, that's not something that's being asked to be approved. We hear your request, but the law requires we submit anything for which approval sought. Just putting it on the record.
Correct, but you also have to give my experts a reasonable opportunity to review the data in order for them to testify.
Actually...
I need that 10 days before, so my traffic engineer can review it.
I'm just putting it on the record.
Okay.
Along that line, Mr. Taylor testified tonight in regards to an answer as to whether the traffic counts were accurate about certain data that he has in his office, in his files that he conferred with in order to compare with the traffic counts that are in his report. We would ask that that data that he has in his office, that he reviewed and testified to tonight, be provided.
I agree with that request.
With due respect, it was provided and appended to the September 9th submission to the board.
So the data that you testified to tonight, in regards to reviewing the questions about whether the traffic counts were done on typical days, is in the September 9th letter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So getting to those, as to whether the days your office, or I guess it was McDonough and Ray, did the traffic counts, are you aware that the first, one of the days was September 6th, which was the first day of school?
I'll take you at your word that there was one done September 6th.
Okay, which was, which was the first day of school? Would you consider doing a traffic count the first day of school a normal occurrence or a typical traffic condition day that would be accurate?
Yes, I think it would be.
Okay, and...
And I think the balancing of the volumes up to every other intersection throughout the network would equalize any anomaly that might occur there.
Okay, and the other, certain other days were on Fridays?
That is correct.
Okay, so with the adjacent community of Lakewood, in the Orthodox Jewish community there, many residents don't drive after 12 or noon on a Friday. Has that, would that have been taken into account as well when these traffic counts were done?
Can I just ask a question on that? This implicates certain constitutional issues that the board is compelled to take into account under some of our recent case decisions, and anyone can answer it, is it typical in a traffic study for the person performing the traffic study to derive the religion of the people who live in an area?
No, I'm saying that based upon the religious practices.
Whose religious practices? That's what I'm saying. Why would a traffic engineer go out, and how would a traffic engineer go out to determine what the religion is of the people who live in an area?
No, it'd be looking at the counts.
What counts?
The traffic count, the traffic counts were done on Friday afternoon.
No, but you are asking, did it take into account the religion of the people in the area, aren't you?
No, no, the practice of the lack of the number of vehicles on the road due to a common practice, a common religious practice.
What common religious practice?
That the Orthodox Jewish community typically does not drive after noon on a Friday.
What Orthodox Jewish community?
What?
What neighboring, what people? Mr. Chairman, I have to tell you, as a constitutional issue, under, you know, the interpretations of the Religious Freedom and Restoration Act, under the United States Constitution, not any of my personal feelings, but just the way the law has been interpreted, I would not put any, we are not permitted to start taking into account what we believe the religion is of people who live in an area, or what their practices are, or the accuracy of a traffic report based upon what we perceive to be the religious practices of people who live in an area. So, I mean, I understand what your question is, but I think that this board has a very tight constitutional constraint on it, you know, in making a determination on the accuracy of a report based upon what we subjectively believe the religious practices of a group of people in an area to be.
Mr. Cucciara, if I could, it's in the traffic engineering community, it's generally accepted that you do not do traffic counts on a Monday or a Friday, that you do counts on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, I don't care what the, what that is, I care about what the constitutional requirement is, and I'm telling this board, because if we wind up in a court somewhere, I want it to be abundantly clear that my counsel to this board is that you don't consider people's religion, or what you think people's religion is, in a traffic count. That's all I'm trying to say. So if there is a general, if there is a general rule as to whether you don't take Mondays and Fridays, let's talk about if there's a general rule or not. But let's, I'm telling you, you can't talk about, you shouldn't count a certain day because you think people are of a certain religion and have a certain practice on those days.
Right, and I agree with you.
Yeah, so counsel, I mean...
That's understood, we can address it, we can address it on direct. We can, I can address it in direct examination of my traffic engineer on his firsthand knowledge, if he has it, of counts not being accurate due to, due to the lack of traffic on the road because of one reason or another.
Well, Mr. Boson, I asked the question of the, of Mr. Taylor a meeting ago, and I said, were the traffic counts on a Friday afternoon representative of the traffic counts during the week? And that's the ATR information that is appended to the report, and Mr. Taylor's direct testimony is that those were compatible or within tolerance of the normal weekday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. So I think we should just move on on that one.
Understood. Okay, in looking at the traffic count sheets that you provided, there's, is there a breakdown between the cars, trucks, and buses that was utilized in your report?
Yes.
Is there a substantial deviation between the three types of vehicles?
I don't know, I don't know what you're asking.
Was it equally distributed between cars, trucks, and buses? Did the traffic counts favor one over the other?
The passenger vehicles are a higher percentage of the traffic throughout the network than heavy vehicles or school buses.
Okay, and then looking at those count sheets, can you explain why the peak hour volumes on the count sheets don't match the peak hour volumes on your figures? You know, for example, looking at County Route 547 and Randolph Road, the northbound morning volumes, the count sheet has 295 through and 89 vehicles to the right, whereas the existing volume shows 388 through and 160 to the right, almost double.
So let's backtrack this for a second. You're talking about Randolph Road and 547?
Correct.
Correct, during the morning peak hour?
Correct.
In the northbound direction?
Correct.
And our peak hour volume is about as 295 throughs?
Right, and 89 to the right.
That's correct.
And the existing volume figure shows 388 through and 160 to the right.
So that is a function of balancing the volumes throughout our network. As I spoke to earlier, we took the peak hour of every individual intersection, then we looked at the network, and we increased all of the volumes up to the highest volumes to come up with the roadway network traffic. So while we only counted 295, all of our analysis assumes 384 vehicles, even though they weren't there, because at one of the other intersections, possibly during one of the other peak hours, that volume was on the roadway. So the analysis within the report are really very conservative.
Okay, so you used average rates, not equations? Doing your analysis?
Sounds like you took the worst-case scenario, right?
We did.
Whatever the highest number was that you found, that's what you used for all the other things you reviewed.
So you're asking about the trip generation and the equations, whether versus rates?
Right.
I think one of the board members also...
Yeah, I just wanted, for my, because I'm just trying to get it in my head, how the study was done. It's whatever the highest number, you looked at four or five different intersections, whichever count was the highest at that particular intersection, you made the assumption that that was the count at all the others.
That's correct.
Even though, even though your actual count at those other intersections were lower than that peak.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, now going to the trip generation, did you use the average rates or actual equations?
I actually don't have that information. In front of me, we utilized what was the guiding principle by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, given the data collected for that land use, but I don't actually have that with me.
Okay, off the top of your head, would you know if the average rates would yield higher results, or the equations would yield higher results?
I don't know that. As I said, we utilized what the ITE recommends for this land use in this size.
Okay, and I know that we talked about the mitigation at the 547 and Randolph. I think everybody knows it's in the county's jurisdiction. With the proposals that have been placed, put forward in regards to not just the intersection, but widening, potential widening of Randolph, would that be, is there any additional land that's being proposed that would be needed in order to make those improvements?
We haven't reached that level of detail in our analysis.
Okay, so there's not even been any type of concept plan or anything like that?
No, what we did was we utilized the capacity analysis to determine lane geometry that would be most beneficial to the existing intersection. There hasn't been any type of conceptual plan. Once we knew that the signal was there, we then conducted the... Once we knew that the signal was there, we then conducted the, the warrant analysis to ensure that the volumes were there. But no, no, uh, concept plans have been done at this point.
Now, you are proposing some widening on Randolph Road in front of your site, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and none of that wide, that, that widening is only going to take place within the adjacency of your property?
That's correct.
So, the rest of Randolph isn't going to be touched?
That's correct.
Do you believe, as a traffic engineer, that Randolph, the other sections of Randolph should be widened for safety concerns as well?
Uh, no, I think the, the roadway can handle the additional traffic associated with the, with the project. Um, it was requested that, that township that we widen along our signage, and we have agreed to do that.
But you believe Randolph Road can accommodate all the traffic that's going to be generated from your site without any type of widening?
I do.
Now, the, the truck restrictions regarding the left-hand turn out, preferably only what, depending on what was discussed earlier, is any type of NJDOT approval required for those truck restrictions?
Uh, no, I do not believe so.
If there is a, if there is approval required, would the applicant seek that from NJDOT?
If there were any type of outside agency approval required for a restriction on a private driveway, uh, yes, we would get whatever necessary approval.
And what if the NJDOT would reject that type of a turning requirement, the left-hand turn only?
There's, there's no reason for NJDOT, one, to be involved on a municipal roadway, but two, to, um, to enforce or decide one way or another on this, on this turning restriction.
Well, you, the, you don't believe the NJDOT has any type of requirement when it comes to truck traffic?
That's, that's not what I said. What I said was, we, as an applicant, at the discretion and trying to be good neighbors, have agreed to prohibit trucks from turning right. There's no weight limit restriction being imposed. There's nothing that's going to change the characteristic of the roadway. We are simply, through education and, um, geometry of our intersections and our driveways, prohibiting the right turn for the, for the trucks.
Well, your testimony is NJDOT, NJDOT approval would not be required-
No, I don't believe so.
For left-hand turn only, for truck traffic?
Correct.
Now, going to your exhibit that you presented, your trip generation chart, the comparison chart, which has the, uh, the project and then comparing it to the manufacturing, general office, and medical offices?
Yep.
You obviously did AM peak hours, PM peak hours, and Saturday hours. Was any calculation done for the comparable land uses based on other times of the day?
Uh, we looked at the AM, the PM, and the Saturday as the peak commuting hours, which is typical traffic engineering practice. We also looked at the daily traffic and did a comparison of that.
Okay, and then looking specifically at the land use code 140, the manufacturing, why does it show a significantly more traffic on a Saturday than during the week? Shouldn't, shouldn't the numbers be lower on the weekend than, than during the week when you're talking about manufacturing?
Based on the, uh, the ITE data, it's showing a higher volume on, on Saturday. We utilized basically the ITA trip generation rates for manufacturing, and accurately depicted that on our, on our table.
But for the warehouse project, for your project, it just happens to be significantly lower?
Based on the ITA data, yes, it's lower.
And that's the same for general office?
That's correct.
Even though offices are typically closed on a Saturday?
When you're talking about 500,000 square feet of office, there are going to be employees, there's going to be cleaning people, there's going to be activity at an office on a Saturday, and that's reflected in the ITA trip generation rates.
Do you know what the range of the sample sizes is in the ITE for the Saturdays? For these types of land uses?
I do not.
Okay, for the medical office, you have 400 square, 400,000 square feet of medical office?
That's correct.
Would that be a typical size of a medical office?
For a medical campus, yes, it's possible.
What do you mean by medical campus?
A collection of medical office in large sizes.
Like a hospital?
Not necessarily a hospital, no. I mean, we could have run trip generation rates for a hospital, I believe, as well, but we specifically looked at medical office.
Do you know what the range of sample sizes would be for the medical?
I don't have that information.
Okay. Now, I think you testified to what your AM and peak, AM and PM peak standard hours are. So, going to your daily number for the project, we'll just stick right with that. If I'm reading this chart correctly, you're indicating about 20% of the anticipated traffic would be allocated to, to truck traffic, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so looking at the daily column of 2008 trips, 20% of that would be for truck traffic?
Uh, that's correct.
So, that'd be, for argument's sake, 401 trips?
Yes.
On a daily basis to the site?
Correct.
Okay, so, taking out your AM and PM peak hours of truck traffic, 35 in the morning, 36 in the evening, that's 71 total trucks during the peak hours, right?
That's correct.
So, throughout the rest of the day, that's 331 trap, truck traffic trips?
Yes.
So, if we're looking at, say, a 12-hour workday, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, or 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, removing those two peak hours, you're talking 33 trucks per hour coming to that site? Or one every approximately two minutes?
I mean, I haven't done the math, but that, that sounds approximately correct.
So, every two minutes, there'll be a truck either coming or going to this site?
Based upon that math, yes.
So, in, in actuality, at 33 trucks per hour, there really is no differentiation between AM peak or PM peak? Because you're talking 33 per hour during any hour of the day, 35 in the morning, and 36 in the evening?
That's correct, that's-
So, it's basically peak hours all day?
Well, that's indicative of the truck traffic. Now, at a warehouse facility, you have a much greater influx of passenger vehicles, employees into the site during the AM commuting hour and the PM commuting hour, which shows the higher trip generation during those, those hours. The other thing that we look at, and the reason we look at those times is because the background traffic on the adjacent roadways is much lower during the middle of the day. We find peaks, and that's why we call them the peak hours, during the peak commuting times. And that's why we analyze those as traffic engineers.
Understood, but you're still talking about throughout the course of a day, one truck per every, for every two minutes going up and down Randolph Road?
Which is indicative of any of the other permitted uses, if not lesser than the other permitted uses within this zone.
Now, your testimony, going back to the last meeting, the site distance values for the ferries driveways, and I think it dovetails into what you had presented tonight. The site distances, were they based on intersection site distance or stopping site distance?
Just bear with me for one second.
I'm going to get the update in.
So, the numbers that I testified to at the last meeting, I believe, were taken from Figure 6A of the NJTOT roadway design, uh, design manual for a design speed of 40 miles an hour and their intersection site distance, stop control on a minor road, two-lane highway.
Was it, that's the site distance for the ingresses and egresses?
That's correct.
Is it, was there an analysis done for the internal intersections of the drive, the driveways?
Uh, yes, we, uh, we, we did review the, uh, the site distances for the internal roadways, and there are sufficient site distances at each of those intersections to be able to, for vehicles to turn.
Is there a sta, is there a standard for internal site distances?
Uh, the number, I don't have off the top of my head, but yes, there is. You know, you, we wouldn't assume, um, the 35 mile an hour, we'd most likely assume a 25 mile an hour speed throughout the, uh, the network.
And that takes into account the high number of trucks anticipated on this type of a site?
It does.
Okay. You also spoke about the number of, at a prior meeting, the number of tractor-trailer parking stalls on site, and that it's overparked in regards to the number of tractor-trailer stalls, right?
No, I don't believe that was my testimony.
Okay, let me rephrase it this way. The, you have a, I don't have the exact number, 100 and some odd tractor-trailer parking spaces on the site, right?
We have a total of
142.
We have 234 loading spaces and 142 trailer parking stalls.
Okay, specifically to the 142 trailer parking spaces or stalls. Are those required under the town's ordinance to have those, 142 or any number of stalls?
I don't believe that's a requirement of the ordinance, no.
Was there any consideration to limiting or reducing the number of those stalls to either add more green space or add more available internal circulation area?
No, I think they're really ancillary to the utilization of the warehouse. It allows, uh, the operators to jockey their trailers and put them out of the dock space to be able to utilize the dock more efficiently.
I understand that, and I think there's still a clarification that the board's waiting on, or testimony relating to how long those trailers are permitted to stay in those stalls, and whether they would be subject to the trailer ordinance of the borough and permits needing, needing to be required or whatever. I don't know if that testimony has been provided yet. But, you know, I think that's something that the board has to consider as to whether or not these trailers can sit there for days on end without being in a loading zone, or in a loading stall, I guess. Now, I know there's going to be additional revisions or potential revisions to the ingresses and egresses. Turning to the exhibit you passed out, I guess you submitted it, and then a blow-up was provided tonight with the revised ingresses and egresses. Looking at Entrance A, that's a, that's a full movement drive as pro, as you're proposing, correct?
Yes.
Do the, do the turning paths of those trucks cross at all?
They do not.
Is it safe to say the reason they don't cross is because the truck turning in is hugging the curb exactly along the curb line?
They do not, uh, they do not intersect because as the truck turns in, he follows the center line of the roadway, and his rear tires track along the curb line.
So, the assumption on that turning radius is that the, the tires will track the curb line? And make as tight a turn as possible to get into the site?
I wouldn't say it's as tight a turn as possible.
Well, can you go over the curb line?
No, but as you're turning in, in a truck, you're not following the curb line, you're following the center line of the driveway. The driver's using that visual cue to navigate and to, to set up his location of his truck. And so, we've designed it, as he follows the center line of the access aisle, to then have the rear tires of the largest vehicle out there, a WB67 Astro vehicle, to not overrun the curb.
And it's your testimony that that will function properly and, and be a safe ingress egress for two trucks going in and out?
It is. It was one of the concerns of the board, which is why we went back and took a hard look at it. We modified some of the radii, put some compound radii in to accommodate their concerns, and so, yes, I, I have, uh, I have no doubt that it'll operate safely and efficiently.
Okay, now going to sketch B, Entrance B, I mean.
Yes.
Trucks coming in on the left-hand side and making, as it's, I guess they'd be making a right as they're coming in. Is that a stop bar right there?
It is a stop bar, yes.
So, if there's a-
Laura, can you put up Entrance B?
If there's a truck waiting at that stop bar, can the trucks still make that turn in there?
So, that stop bar is actually a carryover from the old design of the driveway, where the entrance aisle was actually aligned with that, um, Building B, I believe. And so, we were, it was necessary to stop the vehicles from the interior as vehicles entered from Randolph Road. So, it's really just a carryover from, uh, from the previous design.
So, that, will be there or won't be there?
It's not really necessary to be there. Because they're, all vehicles coming into that are all entering. They're all coming south from Randolph Road. So, there's no need to stop. All vehicles would be traveling further into the site to exit the site.
Okay, understood. Is there any, looking at Entrance C, is there any overlap in regards to trucks turning in? Do they have to cross into the oncoming traffic?
So, the trucks illustrated on Entrance C are a fire truck. And so, while he does need to cross the center line, he will be doing so with his lights on and, you know, in an emergency situation.
Right.
We just wanted to ensure that even with a smaller vehicle radii, the fire truck could enter that, uh, the entrance.
Now, going to Entrance D, trucks leaving the site, because it's a full movement drive,
Yes.
Trucks have to go onto the shoulder of Randolph Road in order to make that, make that left-hand turn out, right? Yeah, bottom left.
So, trucks will utilize the full width of Randolph Road to exit the site. That is correct.
Is that shoulder existing, or is it going to be upgraded, improved?
That shows the, the existing far side of Randolph Road, the existing northern edge of Randolph Road.
Is anything proposed- Is anything proposed to be done to that to take the weight of the trucks?
No, we are widening our half of the roadway as requested.
Which is on your side?
That's correct.
Do you believe anything should be done to that shoulder to deal with all these trucks leaving the site? To avoid any type of additional, like premature deterioration of the shoulder?
I think the roadway has been designed to handle the vehicles that are traveling along the roadway.
The roadways today or the roadways as adding, what do we say, 401 additional trucks daily?
I think they're designed to handle the traffic that is proposed for the project as well as what's currently on the roads.
And then E is automobile entrance only?
That's correct.
Intersection F, the internal.
Yes.
In order to make that turn onto the main interior portion of the site, is the truck crossing into the oncoming traffic there beyond the lane where that stop bar is?
Yes, he would need to utilize the entirety of that access aisle to turn in.
So understanding that this site is going to be mostly dealing with trucks, is that an appropriate design?
I believe, given the frequency of interaction between the trucks here, as we stated, you're talking about a truck every two minutes coming to and from the site, right? The frequency of two trucks interacting at this intersection will be relatively low and that the intersection will operate effectively, given the visibility of the drivers both on the main access aisle and on the central aisle dividing the site.
And same question with internal intersection G. Those trucks are crossing, but they have to cross into the oncoming traffic in order to make their turns as well?
So, yes, given the width of the loading area, which is approximately 80 feet, there's plenty of room there for the vehicle to make that right-hand turn and navigate to the loading dock.
But in order to make that right-hand turn, they're going to cross into the opposing traffic?
In order to make the right-hand turn, they are going to utilize the full 80 feet, actually probably about 60 feet of that area to make that right-hand turn.
Which goes to if, if some of those stalls were eliminated, it could be a safer design so that they would not have to effectively cross over into oncoming traffic to make their turns?
I think the design that we have is typical of any warehousing design, whereas the trucks will utilize the loading dock area in the rear portion of the building. We had the ability there to stripe a 12-foot lane and leave the other 70 feet for that right-hand turn. We opted to put the stop bar in the middle of that aisle. So no, I don't see any, any safety concern with the operation of that.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm finished, subject to the additional testimony and asking additional questions with the, any revisions that are provided or any additional data that's submitted to the, to the board.
Understood.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would like some clarification on this sharing of the electronic file so that when there's testimony that's brought to the board, I have an understanding of how to interpret that data that's provided. Mr. Taylor, when you submit your report to the board, do you sign and seal that report?
I do.
Okay. And fortunately, our counselor left, but maybe you could...
Talk slowly.
If it's signed and sealed under his purview, essentially what they would be checking for is that the, all the parameters that he inputted were...
No, that's not my question, Ms. Newman.
He can share the, his data that went into his report.
No, agreed. So, so what I'm getting at is, is it my understanding that the reports that I should be reviewing and looking at for completeness and for me to base any opinions that I may have should come from a signed and sealed document, not from an electronic file?
But it does. He submitted a signed and sealed traffic report.
That's what I'm getting at. So, so what I'm saying is, is that in any sharing of files and other engineers utilizing that file, if they submit a document and sign and seal it, that is the official document and that, that engineer is stating by signing and sealing that, that they have properly checked the data from the electronic file with the hard copy that Mr. Taylor signed and sealed.
Couple of things. The hard data is not put in his report, as was indicated by Mr. Winkowski, the parameters of which are in there.
Correct.
So when he signs and seals the report, yes, he is certifying and putting his engineer's license to that information.
And that when those other engineers are using that, that electronic file, they are, they are making sure that the data that was inputted into that program is the data from the report?
That's correct.
We'll be confirming that the output that he submitted in his report matches the same output that we produced doing the same, doing a parallel analysis with the, you know, the variables that he collects using the counts, trip generation and all the other variables that they determine in the existing condition.
I did just have one question, one more question I just thought of. There was, the testimony tonight was that I think Building D was reduced by about 6,000 square foot and B and C was increased by 3,000 square foot apiece?
That's correct.
Has there been a revised site plan with all the changes that have been made in regards to that submitted to the board, including like the widening of Randolph Road and this change tonight?
So the widening along Randolph Road was shown on the site plans as submitted. The representation in this exhibit is that if the board preferred the layout as we proposed, it is something that we can accommodate and then at that point the site plans could be updated. But given the fact that we are, I still feel that the original design functions safely and sufficiently, but we're trying to accommodate concerns, we prepared this exhibit to illustrate other options.
Understood, understood, understood. So, yeah, this isn't necessarily what your application is. You prefer the original one, but this was an alternative that's being provided to answer certain questions. Thank you very much, thank you.
Mr. Chair, one quick, can I do one quick clarification regarding the design of Randolph Road? We have plenty of engineering review comments still in our reports that haven't been addressed about, you know, the submission of complete improvement plans for Randolph Road, clearly showing the limits of reconstruction and resurfacing, doing cores where resurfacing is proposed only to verify adequate pavement thickness and showing tie-ins and everything. So there's still a lot of design that has to be submitted for Randolph Road. To say simply you're only resurfacing on, you're on, or reconstructing on your side for a half width and not reconstructing the full thing is still yet to be determined.
We have agreed to comply with the recommendations of the professionals, that's correct.
And then before, there was a question on the, the truck limitations or truck restrictions. You're not, there is no proposal for an actual ordinance requirement or actual regulation that would prohibit trucks from leaving the site in a certain direction. It's simply based through your own physical improvements of signage and enforcement through operational mechanisms. There would be, there's not, actually no enforceable way for police to actually issue a ticket when somebody goes left or turns right.
That's, that's correct. It's all interior to our site through geometric and signage.
Thank you.
Well, no, the signage is going to be...
The signage would not be enforceable, Latin ordinance.
Do we require ordinance? Right, right. If, if there was a favorable action on this application...
Well, I, I think what's being referenced, Mr. Chair, is that absent like a Title 39 agreement, there would be no, you know, ability to enforce the signage on behalf of the municipality.
And I'm sure the applicant would agree to the restriction that signage posted would grant the police department to the power to enforce that.
Yes, absolutely, yes. You know, we would grant the Title 39 rights in order to enforce that.
All right, continuing on with our Traffic Engineering 101 class. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come up and ask questions of Mr. Taylor? And that person has not to be, as long as he's not represented by Mr. Boson. 10:30. But if we've run out of questions here, we're going to do a hot stop.
Ma'am, if you could just state and spell your name and give us your address?
Nicole Woolley, W O O L L E Y, 223 Victory Road.
Okay, whatever questions you have for Mr. Taylor.
I believe it was stated that for Randolph Road, a truck approximately every minute?
No, the trip generation based on what we're looking at is... I believe it's a truck approximately every two minutes.
Every two minutes?
Let me just confirm the actual... Well, this is how we calculate, right? But what we're talking about, heavy vehicles is 35 in the AM and 36 in the PM, so approximately every two minutes.
Okay, and is that the same for 547?
Yes.
Okay, so was any consideration made, you're talking about a light at Randolph, that it's already warranted a light without the extra traffic? What about Miller, Easy Street, Oakland, Victory Road, all the traffic that's going to be backed up from the side streets, causing not only traffic, air pollution, noise pollution, quality life, people live on back roads, not to deal with constant traffic and trucks?
Question, please.
Were any of those other roads considered as far as needing a light and the traffic?
What we looked at was the signalized intersections of Route 547 and Randolph Road as well as Maxim Road and Herbertsville Road. Once we get the traffic onto the county major urban collector, we consider that then out into the regional roadway network. So we looked at the signals, we suggested some modification of the signal timings at those signals and, and so we've looked at the impact along the roadway.
So...
But no, have we, have we looked at a warrant analysis?
They're just going to be backed up, no, no analysis has been done on any of those roads?
No, no analysis has been done with those roads.
That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, if you just state and spell your name and give us your address?
Kathy Novak, 16 Stratton Drive, Howell.
You have to spell your name.
Okay. K A T H I N O V A K.
Your address again?
16 Stratton.
You have that?
S T R A T T O N Drive, Howell. So you did the numbers for Maxim Road, you said, and 547?
That's correct.
And what was the outcome?
So with a, our full buildout of Phase 4 and some minor signal timing modifications, you'll be operating at levels of service E or better.
And can you tell me what E or better means?
E falls in for a signalized intersection, falls within the range of 55 seconds of delay to 80 seconds of delay.
Okay, and so I'm, I'm just a little confused about how you did the traffic study. There were two, two dates or two months, September and October, that you took the counts or that McDonough Ray took the counts? Is that right? I'm not sure who did the counts.
So McDonough Ray conducted the traffic counts in the inception of the job.
And you're using McDonough Ray's counts for this analysis that your firm is signing and sealing?
That's correct.
Okay, just out of curiosity, why didn't McDonough Ray follow through on this? Can you say?
I, I'm really not sure. We were contracted to do the work, I'm not sure why.
Because I think McDonough Ray was also the traffic engineer for 41 Randolph Road and also for the waste transfer station initially, but I know the county took over and did another study, $30,000 worth of study, which I don't think we have the results yet. But are you aware of what's on the corner of Maxim Road and 547?
The park?
Soldier Memorial Park?
Yes.
The fields, the sports, the kids?
Yep.
And on the other side of the road is Pop Warner Fields?
Yes.
And you're telling, you're telling our town that all the trucks are going every two minutes in and out of those warehouses are going to be coming 547 to 195?
That's correct.
And back.
They will be utilizing the county roadway network to access the state and federal roadway network, yes.
And you're saying that this is safe?
I am. Based upon the capacity analyses that we've conducted, I do feel that it is safe.
Thank you.
Can you please state and spell your name for the record and give us your address?
Tina Smilik, last name S M I L E K, 33 Charles Street, Howell, New Jersey. Want to talk about the fire truck that's coming in that you said is going to overlap?
Okay.
Okay, so when that overlaps, it's coming in for an emergency. What's going to happen to all those cars that are currently in there trying to get out? Do you think that's going to hinder a truck coming in when you have a bunch of cars trying to get out during an emergency?
Well, we have five access points to the site, right?
And how many parking spots?
400 and some odd. But that gives us the ability of multiple access points should the, the reason for the emergency services be in this general vicinity. We have the interior roadway network that'll help funnel them to the other driveways to safely egress the site.
400 parking spots? And you're going to tell me they're all going to go out the same direction? They're not all going to try to get to the quickest way out to get from an emergency while emergency vehicles are going in?
Yes, I, I think they will avoid the emergency vehicles and they'll funnel as directed
They're not going to know which way the emergency vehicles are coming from or coming in from, so how are they going to avoid that?
So depending on where the emergency is, the emergency vehicles have five access points to be able to get into the site.
Correct.
If the passenger vehicles are egressing from driveway C, they have driveway A, B, D and E to access the site.
And how do, how does the people, how do the people know which entrance the emergency vehicles are coming in?
So they, the emergency vehicles will be heading towards where in the site the necessary emergency is.
Okay, which fire district comes to that? Where, what direction are they coming from?
I have the information somewhere. We met with them, do you have the... So it's the Ramtown Fire Network. Honestly, I do not know which direction they would be from here. I'm not exactly familiar with the, where the house is. However, we have showed a right-hand turn, which is the most conservative turn coming in. Should they be coming from Randolph Road to the east and need to make a left into the site, the maneuver will actually be easier.
Okay, well, equally from that distance, it might be coming from southern too, which is coming from Route 9. So, you know, there's multiple sites and then also you have, I just don't think overlapping any driveway to impede emergency vehicles. You can't tell people, oh, only go out this driveway, it's an emergency. If there's a big fire, they're running for whichever way they can. You've got people from one side to another. If you have an emergency there, that overlapping is not going to...
Please, let's hold it to questions, you can testify later.
Sorry. Okay. So what date was this study done, the traffic study?
The most recent revision of the traffic study is April 26, 2019.
So we, no, the one that they did, that you're getting the information from, when did they...
Not the date on the, you're not asking the date of the report, you're asking the date that the counts were done.
Correct.
The traffic counts were conducted in September and October of 2018.
Okay, so that bridge was closed, Ramtown Greenville Bridge and the other bridge was closed on August 13th?
That's correct.
I know Ramtown Greenville Bridge didn't open till the end of January 2019.
That's correct.
And what date did the other bridge open?
I don't have the exact date, but it was repaired and opened by the time of the counts in September of 18.
Okay, I think that needs further review, but the one date of the bridge was not, it was still closed for the Ramtown Greenville. Okay, campus, the medical... Okay, campus, the medical campus. Will there be hazmat vehicles traveling in and back and forth for this medical campus?
We're not proposing a medical campus. It was done for a comparison of another permitted use that could be constructed on this piece of property.
So there's not a medical campus going in here?
No.
Will there be a medical campus going in here?
If this application was abandoned and then somebody else came forward with a medical campus, it is a permitted use within the zone. So it is feasible that somebody could develop a medical campus on this piece of property. But that's not what's proposed.
Okay, so when you say medical campus, you were just, it's an assumption, it's not what's going there?
We were looking to draw a comparison to other permitted uses within the zone.
So we still have no idea what's going in any of these buildings?
So we have testified that these will be typical warehouse tenants. But no, we don't have specific tenants at this point.
I'm sorry, I'm just getting confused with the use of the word, with the use of the word "medical campus", and you're comparing it to something that's never going to happen there, is basically what you're saying, if you get approval and hold this.
So what the comparison was drawn for was to illustrate the impact of the traffic associated with our project and what other uses that are permitted within the zone, what could be constructed on the lot. And we were trying to illustrate the point that the warehouse use is actually one of the lowest intensive uses of what's permitted within the zone. And so we compared it to medical office, to general office, and to manufacturing. And what that shows is, based upon the ITE trip generation, each one of those other uses generates three, four, five, seven times the amount of traffic of what the warehouse project as proposed would generate.
And what percentile is that you are getting traffic reports correct based on not knowing the businesses? You're just taking an average, right?
We're utilizing the ITE trip generation manual to generate traffic for the proposed warehouse.
Okay, last couple of questions. How many parking spots was in here? Or cars?
Seven hundred and six parking spaces.
And how many for truck?
Four hundred and eighty-four, no, excuse me, two hundred and thirty-four loading spaces. And I believe it's a hundred and forty-two.
Okay, so the ratio, I believe Mr. Castro brought this up at the last meeting, the ratio between the number of parking spaces and the number of truck spaces compared to your traffic study, there's a big variation in the ratios here. You're not planning on all those parking spots being used, is that...
So we don't necessarily anticipate all the spaces being utilized. However, we wanted to be conservative and ensure that we met the ordinance requirement for the office space within the warehouse. Even though it's typically ancillary to the warehouse, we wanted to ensure that we were not creating any variance conditions before the board.
So is it possible that you will fill all those spaces? Is there any...
I mean, there's the possibility, yes. It's not anticipated, but we've proposed it, as I said, to make sure that we meet the ordinance requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, please state and spell your name for the record and give us your address.
Joan Osborne, 28 Bronia Street, Howell, New Jersey, O-S-B-O-R-N-E.
Can you just spell the street and give me your address?
R-O-N-I-A, 28.
Thanks.
I just have a couple more questions. I thank you for... I reviewed the video and I was up here for a while, so I thank you for all that time.
Are you getting this?
Barely.
You look like you're...
Barely.
Looks like you're struggling to hear.
Yeah, barely.
And I'm also losing my voice, so I will try to keep it close. Just going back to trip generation data. Page five of your report, you talked about a traffic volume growth rate assignment, and you used 2% based on the New Jersey Department of Transportation Annual Background Growth Rate Table. Do you see that?
I don't see it on page five, but yes, that's what we utilize to calculate the background growth rate table.
Okay.
Background growth rate.
And is that a percentage of growth that is attributable across the whole state? Or is that specific to Monmouth County?
It's specific to Monmouth County.
Okay, and that's the entire county, including areas that are already built out?
It's specific to Monmouth County.
Meaning the entire county?
Yes.
Okay, is there any way to look and differentiate out areas that are considered growth areas, such as Howell Township, where we're putting in a bunch of affordable housing in the next five years?
So that's not typical practice. We would look to the NJDOT growth rates.
Okay, so if there are a bunch, that's an average that you're taking across the entire county?
It's a utilization based on the classification of the roadway, but yes, it's across the entire county.
Okay, so there are areas of the county that will have a much higher growth rate and areas that will have no growth rate, correct?
I mean, that's not how the rate is applied, but there is the possibility.
And in fact, it's not just a possibility. It's true that in some parts of Monmouth County, there's growth, and in some parts, there's not, correct?
I can't really answer that question.
You don't know?
I don't track all the development applications within Monmouth County.
So you don't know if 2% for Howell Township is low, high, or reasonable?
I think it's applicable based upon the NJDOT standards.
Right, but being applicable, does it give you any degree of confidence that you're getting an accurate amount of how much additional traffic you can project based on future growth?
I think it does. I think that's why the NJDOT reviews these and sets forth these rates. I think the other thing to keep in mind here is we also look to the site-specific approved developments in the general area. That's background growth that's going on throughout the area. We also look to include the other developments specifically within the area, including the church and forty-one Randolph and the transfer station.
Right, and going to the transfer station, you said you did look at the traffic report on that. And which traffic report did you look at?
I don't have that with me, but we included the background traffic associated with the transfer station.
Okay, and you know that the county didn't want to rely on that traffic report. They wanted to produce their own because they didn't have a degree of confidence in the trip generation, apparently. So they're spending thirty thousand of their own money to get another one that's not done yet. Did you know that?
Well, can I just ask? You're making an assertion and asking him whether he knows it or not, but we have nothing to rely on that that's an accurate statement as to why they're, or whether they're doing that.
Well, you can take my representation that the Board of Freeholders did agree and are awaiting a traffic study to be completed, to be presented to the Solid Waste Advisory Commission.
I can answer that, yes. I am aware that the county is conducting their own study through this area, and it is not yet available to the public because I do have regular contact with the county.
Okay, so do you have any plans to incorporate that in should it become available before this application is completed and approved?
I think we would review the findings of the study, absolutely.
And under the traffic volume growth rate, you only have to anticipate traffic level growth for three years from the date that you're doing your report? Is that accurate?
So that was the anticipated build year for the project.
Okay, and when you say anticipated build year, you're looking at only the first phase of building?
That's correct.
Okay, so your report doesn't anticipate any additional growth for further phases of the development?
So ideally, we'd have the whole building built in three years.
Oh, I thought you were doing it in phases.
We are, and it depends on how the market goes and how tenants are available. I guarantee we would be overjoyed to have the whole thing built in three years.
So Mr. Taylor, just to clarify, your traffic report assumes full buildout of the project, correct?
Yes. In 2024. For 2024. Yes, I apologize, for 2024 for Phase Four.
Okay, so will you be doing additional traffic studies to gauge the additional background growth?
So I apologize, we, for each individual year, for 2021, which would be two years, we generated background growth. For Phase Two would be 2022, for Phase Three is 2023, and for Phase Four is 2024. And so there was growth added to each year to accommodate the full buildout of the project.
Now, in going back to the ITE studies that you received, do you know if any of those studies included areas that had bus service or train service to the facilities that were being built?
I don't have that information.
And is there bus or train service available to anyone who might be working at this facility?
I do not believe so.
And my last couple of questions is about the memorandum from Jay Troutman. Now, is Mr. Troutman, he's not employed by your firm, correct?
He is not, no.
Okay, and he provided this memorandum to his file, it appears. Did you see any signature on the memorandum anywhere?
I do not, no.
Okay, so it's not a signed and sealed engineering document that you're relying on, correct?
No, it's a memorandum prepared by McDonough Ray.
And he's got an opinion in here that you are relying upon, however, that the traffic volumes used in the traffic study are valid based on comparison to volumes collected on other weekdays in March 2018, correct?
That's correct, as well as the fact that the bridge was open at the time of the counts.
The fact that one bridge out of the two was open, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and you've already testified that you don't believe that any other, that the bridge that was closed would have impacted traffic on Randolph in any way, correct?
No, I do not believe it will, given the detour route that was in place while the bridge was out.
Okay, so you expect that everyone who was affected by it would somehow still come back to Randolph and not go a different direction to get to where they were going?
Yes, I anticipate that the detour route given will not impact the volumes at Randolph Road.
Okay, and that's your opinion, and that's the opinion that Mr. Troutman had in his memo, correct?
That's correct.
And he, but he didn't state it was given to any degree of engineering certainty, did he, in this memorandum?
I don't know what you're asking.
Well, he gave an opinion, correct?
Correct.
Did he give any indication? He didn't sign and seal it with his engineering certification, correct?
No, there's no signature on it.
And he didn't make a statement that this opinion was being given to any degree of engineering certainty, did he?
Says, "As shown on the table above, the traffic volumes used in the traffic study are valid based on a comparison to volumes collected on other weekdays in March 2018."
So no, he didn't use the words that he is giving this opinion to a degree of engineering certainty?
Mr. Chairman, the witness has answered the question to the best of his ability on this.
Yeah, let's move on, Ms. Osborne.
Okay, did you look at the dates that he used for his comparison? He's listed March 26th, 2018, March 27th. Did you look to see if those dates included any holidays?
I did not, no.
Okay, so you're not aware of whether they included Good Friday, Palm Sunday, anything of that nature?
I did not.
You don't know if the schools were open and closed during the time that he's making the comparison?
I do not know.
Okay, thank you.
Can you please state and spell your name for the record and give us your address?
Mark Parisi, P-A-R-I-S-I, Two Castle Court. Good evening. I had a question about the trailers and the storage. Last meeting, there was discussion about how there was an ordinance that prohibited trailers from being left on-site for more than 24 hours and that if a screen would need to be erected. Do you recall that testimony?
I don't know that that was his testimony, and I don't know that it was... Did you testify about?
I don't think so, no.
Well, can I just ask this question, counsel? It is an issue, it's clearly an issue, it's been discussed. But is that compliance with that ordinance, is that something Mr. Taylor is going to make part of his testimony? Or you have someone else that'll address that?
Somebody else.
Okay.
My next question had to do with potential queuing at Old Tavern Road in 195. You had mentioned earlier that your traffic study did contemplate additional queuing at those intersections. Do you have any data? Because I recall you mentioned something about how the unsignalized intersection of Randolph Road, that there could be queuing of up to 900 seconds. Do you have any data regarding any additional queuing at Old Tavern and 195?
So we did analyze Old Tavern and 195, and I do not have the specific queuing data to that. What I can tell you is...
Let's just be clear for the record. You analyzed Old Tavern, Herbertsville Road, and 547.
That is correct.
You did not analyze the ramps from 195.
I did not, no. So we, based upon our full buildout analysis and minor signal modifications, we can, sorry, just kidding, minor signal timing modifications, we can come, we maintain the levels of service that are currently out there today. The level of service D in the morning and E in the evening.
So let me understand this. With the addition of 33 additional trucks per hour to every minute, that it's not going to affect the current traffic at those intersections?
So what we analyzed was the no build and build condition. And then we determined what was necessary to mitigate the impact of our traffic. And what that came to was minor signal timing modifications at the intersection.
Have you had a chance to review the Monmouth County planning, master plan, and whether or not Route 547 has received any specific designation?
I have not recently, no.
I did, and it's designated as a scenic road. Are you aware of that?
No. I know it is designated as an urban collector roadway.
Do you believe that additional queuing and the visual obsolescence of trucks is of any benefit to the public?
I can't really answer that.
I don't think that's his purview of expertise. I think that's more appropriate to ask the planner.
Okay, I respect that, Chairman. Moving along. Everything else that I had questions for was already addressed by other individuals tonight, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, it's almost time, and I do turn into a pumpkin. We have discussed that we will hold a special meeting to accommodate this application. It will be the only item on the agenda for that night. And Mr. Cucciara, would you please make the announcement?
Any application of Monmouth Commerce Center, case number SP-1052, be carried to the boards, a special meeting to be held on October 10th, 2019, beginning at 7:00 o'clock here in the main meeting room at Town Hall. There will be a further notice to property owners. So if you receive any notices, you will not receive another. This is your notice that the meeting is being carried to a special meeting to be held on October 10th, 2019, beginning 7:00 o'clock here in the main meeting room at Town Hall.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Counselor, just need an extension of time on that as well.
I coach baseballs.
I was just saying, I thought one of the board members said he wouldn't be here till 7:15. I was just asking if we...
I said 7:15 today. We got done early, so I will be here as close as possible.
Okay, I didn't know if you wanted to start it a few minutes later since it's a special.
We aspire for 7:00 o'clock at the moment.
That's fine, I just, he made a comment through October 10th.
Well, I just have to ask, Brian, no master plan subcommittee report?
I don't know, I have to prefer, Peter's not here. We're still meeting Thursday, right?
We are meeting next Thursday, yes.
Yeah, we have no report at this particular time. We'll have something for the next meeting.
Mr. Cucchiara, any reason we're going to executive?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
I, I didn't pick anybody.
Bye.
Thank you.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you.